All right, with that, as a preliminary matter, my name is Kevin Calcutta, the Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Anita Mecklenburg?
Here.
C.C. Van Tyn?
Here.
Thank you very much. And staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Blythe Robinson?
Here.
Judith Lozardi?
Here.
And Hillary Cohen?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as any reasonable access is afforded to the public so they can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. With that, Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. So we're going to start tonight with a continuation of a public hearing regarding a dog owned by Ms. Melissa Mitchell, and for the board to determine whether the dog is a nuisance dog, a dangerous dog, or neither. After that, I have some updates on COVID-19, followed by public comment. The action items include approval of two items regarding the Lakeland Hills 40B project at 144 Seacom Street, both the approval of a memorandum of standing and acceptance of a gift. The next item is considering designating the municipal approving authority for remote learning enrichment programs that are happening in town. Consider approval of the use of Town Hill by the garden club on October 17th to dedicate the tree that they have purchased and planted to dedicate to essential workers. And the last action item is to consider approval of two licenses that have been requested by Zellus Beer Company for pop-up beer and barbecue on Town Hill for Sundays starting October 20th. Discussion items include a proposal to the town's general bylaws on animal control, review of the warrant articles for the fall town meeting, discuss website posting of board correspondence, town administrator updates, or four warrants to be signed in two sets of minutes to be approved. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Blythe. That brings us to our first item this evening. It is the continuation of a dangerous dog hearing. As Blythe had identified, very quickly, I'll go through the high-level outline of what we're going to be doing, and then we'll go into the specifics and all the fun notes that need to be said before we can get started. So we're going to start with some intro-
Kevin, could I just interject quickly?
Sure, go right ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to, first of all, confirm whether or not the issue with the streaming has been corrected, and provided it hasn't, I just want to confirm that Attorney Cohen and the complaintant are amenable to, you know, beginning the hearing, notwithstanding whatever streaming issue is occurring, separate from the Zoom meeting, of course.
That's fine with us.
Attorney Cohen, go right ahead.
That's fine with us. Thank you, Attorney Miller, for checking.
Thanks, Peter. So a high-level overview of what we'll be doing for the continuation of this hearing. We will start with some intro comments by the chair. We will be swearing in our witnesses that will be giving testimony collectively. We will be hearing from the new evaluation from our dog expert from Attorney Cohen. We will be moving on to any testimony from our animal control officer. We will be hearing if there is any testimony from the town's expert that reviewed and consulted. We will open it up for any public questions at that time. We will allow the Beechkoskis any closing remarks, and then as well, we will allow the dog owner, Ms. Mitchell, or Attorney Cohen, any closing remarks. From there, the board will close the public hearing, begin deliberations, and potentially come with a determination. Our first item then is for me to go through a couple of introductory items. The first is that this is a dangerous dog public hearing under General Law Chapter 140, subsection 157. Written notice of this public hearing was provided to the owner of the dog that is subject of the complaint. The Select Board Chair identifies that all the materials that have been submitted, we've already identified all of those. Peter, we do not need to review all those that were submitted and reviewed already, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. If there is anybody who wishes to speak or ask questions, just know that you will have that opportunity, but know that they must be directed through the chair. Please remember to speak and stick to relevant issues and to please be respectful. The other item is swearing in of our witnesses. If anybody was noted in that high-level overview as providing testimony or being called to provide testimony, we are going to have to swear you in collectively right now. I'm going to go through a quick statement. At that point, after I'm done, it'll ask you to reply in "I do", and have it be audibly set so you are off mute, so we can capture it. Everybody good? All right, here we go. "Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?"
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Now that we have sworn in our witnesses, I will toss it to Attorney Cohen to introduce our new dog expert. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you again for giving us the opportunity to have Mr. Jim Crosby get involved. With that, Jim, you've been referred to as a dog expert. Are you?
Yes, I have been accepted as a canine behavior, dog bite, and dog attack expert in municipal, state superior, and federal court districts all across the United States, and have also given expert testimony in Canada, in the United Kingdom, in the Commonwealth of Australia, and in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and have also taught dog behavior and bite investigations in all of those locations, and in both Italy and Poland.
And have you ever been accepted as an expert in Massachusetts?
Yes, I have.
Do you have a specific area that you're an expert in?
My expertise is in, and I've been accepted in, canine behavior, dog bites, both the investigation of and the assessment and interpretation of, dog attacks, particularly fatal attacks, which is one of my specialties. I've also been accepted in the use of deadly force by police against companion animals, and the proper anticipation or understanding of aggressive signals given by dogs, and ways of dealing with those.
And I'm sure the board has your seven-page CV, so I just want to cover one or two more aspects. I know you're a retired police officer. Can you tell us also about your experience as an animal control officer or supervisor?
Yes, as you said, I'm a retired police lieutenant, having done 22 and a half years up to it, including as a commanding officer. I am a certified animal control officer in the state of Florida, and I'm also certified as a euthanasia technician in the state. I have been the chief officer of two separate animal control agencies, both here in Florida, and have taught and worked with animal control agencies across the country. I am a member of the National Animal Control Association and part of their Training Advisory Committee. I sit on the Board of Directors of the Council for Certification of Professional Dog Trainers. Particularly with animal control and police, I have assisted on scene, excuse me, in a number of both serious and humanly fatal dog attacks, and assisted and indeed instructed in those investigations.
Okay. In preparation for tonight, can you share with us what you've reviewed in terms of the dog Annabelle?
Yes, I have been through and reviewed, and the list of documents is in my report. But to do it briefly here... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling. The report of Hillary Cohen, animal control officer with the Norfolk Police Department, letters from Melissa Mitchell to Hillary Cohen, letter from Steve Connolly. I've reviewed the police reports. I've reviewed other accounts and statements provided in discovery. And I've reviewed two color digital images of the minor victim's wounds after treatment. I've also reviewed photographs that were taken in my direction by Ms. Mitchell of the bite dentition of the dog known as Annabelle.
And what does that last part mean?
That means that I had Ms. Mitchell take photographs of Annabelle's jaws, her upper and lower teeth, and including a scale in those photographs, so that I could not only see if the dentition was normal and proper, but also be able to remotely measure the size of the incisors, which are the teeth in the middle of the jaw, versus the length and spacing of the canine teeth, which are the four longer teeth, two upper and two lower.
Why is that measurement significant?
Because the engagement of canine teeth is a central factor of what is known as the Dunbar Dog Bite Assessment Tool. This is a bite assessment scale that was established by Dr. Ian Dunbar, who is a veterinary behaviorist. I was actually taught the scale by Dr. Dunbar himself. Have attended a number of his seminars. I know Dr. Dunbar, and we have had quite a bit of discussion about the scale and other factors regarding dog bites and dog bite assessment. And as a matter of fact, I am currently a guiding member, or member, however you want to put it, of a group that, with Dr. Dunbar's cooperation and agreement, backed by the Matties Fund Shelter Medicine Program, we are examining the Dunbar Scale to potentially expand its applications and to clarify some of the language in it, and also to allow it to better describe the effects and behaviors involved in dog bites.
What's the significance of the Dunbar Scale? And, yeah, what's the significance of it?
The Dunbar Scale is currently the best available tool to allow comparison and analysis based on objective criteria of the severity of a dog bite and the likely behaviors that accompany such a bite. Before that, we had to go with, is that a bad bite or not? With Dunbar, we can assign a numeric level to the bite based on measurable criteria.
Based on measurable criteria regarding Annabelle and the bite to the young boy, have you reached a conclusion what this bite would be on the Dunbar Scale?
Yes, I have.
I'm also going to attempt to just share my screen for a second. Maybe not. Okay, the host won't allow me to, but in terms of the Dunbar Scale, what are the numbers that are on the scale?
Incidents on the-
Hold on one second, please. I'm sorry to interrupt, gentlemen. But Attorney Cohen, if you'd like me to give you the ability to share, I'm happy to try to figure out how to do so. That would just be the first time that we've done that since you started hosting these meetings. So I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
Thank you. No, that's fine, because I just learned how to share my screen, so everything, I don't want to take up too much time. But we've talked about the Dunbar Scale in prior hearing here. Thank you, though. So, Jim, where do you think Annabelle's bite with the boy falls?
Okay, the scale, to back up and catch your initial question, the scale runs from a level one to a level six, and they are described and quantified by the contact with teeth. The only one that's quantified by its results is a level six, and a level six is a human fatality, no matter how bad the bite was. Out of the six levels, level three is the first level at which teeth actually puncture skin. It is the most common, probably 95% of bites are level three, or a 3B, which Dr. Dunbar has added to his scale for multiple minor bites. The boy in this case's bite appears, to the best of my knowledge, or best of my ability to assess, to be a level three bite, in that there were one to four punctures from a single bite engagement, with no puncture deeper than half the length of the dog's canine tooth. According to the scale, it said may be lacerations in a single direction caused by the victim pulling away, or the owner pulling the dog away, or due to gravity. For instance, a little dog is picked up and then dropped to the floor.
And in preparation for this case, or your knowledge of the case, you've learned that Annabelle has, that this bite occurred on her property, and that there was a bite to a dog named Indigo, which may or may not have occurred on this property, but it seems like the scenario originated on Annabelle's property. Can you tell us, what, have you, well, shoot, there you are. Can you tell us, what is, what are the, if you go, if you back up the bite and look at the facts before the bite, A, is it important to know those facts, and B, what do the facts here tell you?
Yes, to adequately interpret any dog bite requires not just a ruler, so to speak, but to examine the totality of circumstances of the bite. For instance, if a dog is restrained in a corner and out of being abused, bites a number of times to try to get away, that is much different than a dog who has targeted somebody, chased them down, and then bitten them several times, even though the bites themselves may be equally deep. So it is very important to understand the circumstances. It is also important to understand the circumstances in this case, because the bitten child was wearing a hat and also protective face covering. And faces are very important to dogs. So factoring that into the behavior of the dog is ultimately very important.
And what can you tell us about the facts, as you know them, that precipitated the bite to the boy?
My understanding from the reports and documents is that the boy who lived at this residence and the boy who was bitten were present within the area that the dog Annabelle had access to when she was properly restrained on her tether. That the residence boy's grandmother brought Annabelle outside. I don't know if she was aware the boys were there or not, but she placed Annabelle on the tether. At that point, at whatever speed, the young man who was bitten retreated from the area where he and the other boy were playing, and Annabelle reacted by pursuing him and biting him one time on the leg just below the knee. It was a single engagement. The dog bit and released. The young man continued in the direction he was going, and Annabelle went back to where she was accustomed to being.
And what does it tell you that it was a single engagement?
It tells me that it was basically a warning or communication, if you will. A dog that is protecting its territory or warning away a person, other animal, or whatever, that it does not recognize as belonging there, or perhaps appears to be novel or unusual or a potential threat. For a dog to use a single moderated and controlled bite to gain space by either scaring that person or object away or getting room for themselves to retreat is extremely common, is normal canine behavior, and shows that this is, in that sort of case, that the dog is interested in abating a perceived threat.
For a dog who's abating a perceived threat, her, Annabelle's, the bite that she inflicted on the boy, do you, in your opinion, is that grossly disproportionate to the threat that Annabelle perceived? Could she have, could it have been worse if she had a different intent in her pursuing the boy?
There would be a lot of difference if the purpose were other than communicating or warning away. This was, again, a single engagement, moderated, it was controlled. The fact that she bit him just below the knee indicates that she elected to take the closest target, which is typical for warning, rather than, for instance, leaping up and grabbing him by the back of the neck, or grabbing him by an arm and dragging him to the ground. That control is normal. And a disproportionate bite would be like, unfortunately, sadly many that I've seen. For instance, a boy about the same age that was pursued and attacked by a dog. This was a true attack in the case that the bite, the worst bite was to the upper arm. It avulsed tissue all the way down to the surface of the humerus, the bone. It dislocated the humerus from the joint. It was actually very touch and go as to whether the child would lose the arm. And there were multiple bites of that severity.
Does the fact that Annabelle could control, or do you believe Annabelle could control or show restraint regarding the type of bite she delivered?
Oh, certainly. If, even a dog the size of Annabelle, if the dog had grabbed the child's leg, and if we were to presume from behind, I have seen cases where dogs have removed entire calf muscles and ripped them from the bone. So a healthy dog of Annabelle's rough size and conformation can do a lot of damage, even with a single bite, should they decide to close and rip and tear the tissue.
So then, your opinion is, if you look to the bite, you can determine that Annabelle, she was reacting to a threat more than targeting the boy for a harsher bite?
Well, I can tell that the bite was controlled and moderated, and thus, it is most consistent with warning or communicating that her discomfort and an apparent perception of a threat, and that once the bite was inflicted, the threat removed itself, and so everything was over.
And as part of your report, you did review for us the information that we had regarding the dog-on-dog incident that Annabelle had?
Yes.
And based on, well, what is your understanding of the facts in that instance?
In this incident, in that alleged incident, there was contact supposedly between Annabelle and another dog. This incident allegedly occurred sometime in the summer or fall of 2018, and-
This, sorry, Jim, this, the bite to the dog?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, the one with the dog Indy?
Yeah, I think it was 2017.
Yeah, correct. That's 7/16 of 2017. Yes, in that case, Indy, the other dog, and Annabelle were both, according to the report, chasing a rabbit. And a rabbit is an extremely attractive target to even something as small as one of my miniature wire-haired dachshunds. Bunnies are just chaseable. And both dogs went after the bunny, and as a result of both of them acquiring the target and trying to grab the bunny, there was a conflict between the two dogs over that potential resource. And it is normal and customary between dogs that disputes over social standing, or resource access, or a toy, or a rawhide, or a bunny involve teeth, because dogs don't have thumbs, so they can't reach out and punch each other. So the fact that there was a minor bite to another dog in the course of a dispute over resource is normal dog behavior.
As you're aware, but can you tell us your thoughts on the police report we received? Now, by bringing it up, I hate to give it credence, but it will come up later, so I'd rather understand it now. We received a police report regarding a bite on the property back in 2018. Have you had a chance to look at that?
Yes, I have.
So before you interpret anything about the bite, being an animal control officer, being a trainer, being a supervisor, and on the council that you mentioned, the National Animal Control Officers Association, what do you make of the fact that this bite wasn't reported, and we're just getting this in the summer of 2020?
From my own experience as the chief officer of two different agencies, where I had the lawful responsibility and duty to determine dangerous dog status in accordance with Florida statutes and local ordinances, if it wasn't reported at the time, then I consider that to be inadmissible in a new case as far as dangerous behavior, because it wasn't reported. If it had, if and when it might or might not have happened, such a thing should have been reported, especially considering that in Massachusetts, like in Florida, dog bites are mandatory reporting items due to the legal controls on rabies vectors. And any professional, be it an animal control officer, or a veterinarian, or a physician at the hospital, would be mandated legally to report such a thing. Since it was not reported, I would not allow any of the officers who had answered to me in either agencies to submit that as evidence of anything, especially since the, we can't even narrow down to a month, much less a day, or place, or time that this incident allegedly occurred.
When you look at the, at the setting, like all of us, you can see that the setting for these incidents with Annabelle, they're all on her property.
That is correct.
So seeing that, what does that tell you about Annabelle as a, as a dog in general?
As a dog in general, that tells me that Annabelle is, to a normal extent, protective of her family and of the property, because that is the source of her resources, her food, her water, affection and attention, her toys, her space where she goes to the bathroom. Dogs naturally will protect resources, and that includes the territory that they call home. It may or may not include an entire yard, front and back. Dogs don't recognize property lines. But Annabelle was within her own property, and when this incident occurred- And when this incident occurred and as such predictably and understandably saw something novel, in this case, the young man with a mask and a hat on, that she didn't understand and appears to have perceived as a potential threat. So she did the doggy thing. She chased after it. She nipped it once and it went away.
In your past cases in Massachusetts, you've been asked your opinion about a dog in relation to the governing statute, correct?
Yes.
And you've delivered those opinions in court?
Yes.
So under the statute here, a dog, no dog, as you're familiar with, no dogs should be deemed dangerous if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following. And we believe this applies, or I'm asking you if this applies, if the dog was protecting or defending itself, another domestic animal or a person from attack or assault. Are you familiar with that definition of nuisance?
Yes, sir. I've looked at and reviewed it tonight.
Have you been able to form an opinion here as to whether Annabelle, before we get there, are you also familiar with the definition of a dangerous dog in Massachusetts?
Yes.
And have you formed an opinion as to whether or not Annabelle is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog?
In my professional opinion, after reviewing this case, I would say that Annabelle was acting reasonably in that she was protecting her property and potentially protecting her co-owner, the other young man, from a perceived threat. Her reaction was not disproportionate. It was normal and proportionate. It was reasonable. I do not believe frankly that Annabelle is either dangerous or a nuisance dog.
Okay. But in light of the Massachusetts definition, well, you don't believe she's nuisance, but in light of our definition that we have to use, I think it's appropriate that it applies, but we can debate that. If you don't think a label applies, we can debate it later. Does the fact that a dog has one or two nuisance bites or on a dog and on a person or on multiple people at different times, does two nuisance bites equal a dangerous? Does it work like that, that if the dog does it a second time, suddenly it's, it has more value on the scale?
I would say no, unless the, for instance, state law specifically said if within X period of time, X number of incidents at at least such a level occurred, then multiple alleged incidents or multiple incidents are not necessarily indicative, especially if they are all of limited intensity and if they are all in relation to, to different sorts of stimuli. In this case, we've got a little boy or a young man who was on property versus the other incident of another dog that was competing with her for a bunny rabbit. Those are two very different incidents.
Since, since the June incident with the boy, what, have you ever spoken with Melissa Mitchell?
I've spoken with her briefly a couple of times, one of which was to give her direction on the photographs I wanted taken. And the other time was to generally talk about Annabelle and the incident.
Since the June incident, Melissa has, she shortened the run that the dog is on. She's made sure that the dog is never outside without an adult when Annabelle's on her run. She's made sure that when kids are over, the dog is inside. And she muzzles Annabelle when Annabelle's off the property. When you look at your assessment of Annabelle and these measures that Melissa has taken, are they appropriate and does that, do you think that could help prevent a future incident?
I think number one, those are excellent choices that she has voluntarily come up with. They are the reasonable choices that, were I to simply issue an order, which I can't, but if I was, of what I would have an owner of any dog in a similar situation do, those are very substantial and positive moves that reduce as far as possible any chance or opportunity for either of the described incidents to occur again. There is, there's nothing in there that's particularly onerous. And all of them are positive measures that simply enhance the safety of, of anybody coming on their property and also the safety of Annabelle herself.
As part of the work with Annabelle and what you believe troubles her, or actually you said she's behaved like a normal dog, is there a way to train her, either to train that out of her, which it sounds like if it's, if that's who she is, that's who she is as a normal dog? Is there a way to train her or desensitize her in any way to the resource guarding or the protectionism that she possesses?
Absolutely. A process called progressive desensitization is extremely effective. It is based on establishing alternate behaviors to the behavior you wish to fade or reduce and reinforcing those replacement behaviors. In a case like Annabelle, I would have a two-pronged attack. Number one, I would work her around other animals and valuable resources. By such, we would teach Annabelle proper responses. I like to default to a sit and look at me. But we would teach Annabelle that anytime she was told to sit and look, that she would stop, sit and look at the owner, expecting reinforcement, which she would get. And that that would first happen around other dogs and resources at a substantial difference. And then we would gradually close the difference to make sure that if there was a resource that she was competing with another dog over, be it a bunny rabbit or a toy or a rawhide, that she would have an off switch and have a control switch where she would be able to constructively do something else that would get her reinforcement. As far as the incident with the child on property, that's even easier because one would teach Annabelle, again, to sit and control looking at you and go out of one's way to introduce as many people, old, young, kids, boys, girls, disabled, whoever you could kind into coming over to the house for a lemonade, and introduce Annabelle to them progressively and at decreasing distances to the point where she realized that these people were not a threat. Part of that would probably involve having the people come onto the property. And when Annabelle noticed her, noticed the person, they would toss Annabelle a treat and walk away. I said we'd desensitize her reluctance to have people on the property and actually change it into welcoming behavior.
Is Annabelle, based on the totality of the circumstances and everything you've had a chance to review and learn, is Annabelle a threat to the public?
Oh, no. She has only engaged with a person the one time on her own property within the limited area of that property that she was restrained. And when that person looked odd because of the mask and hat and was, was not someone that she was said, oh, hi, here's little Billy or whomever, and he's fine. The other case happened off property with another dog. She, at this moment, without training, she might get into another argument with another dog if there was another bunny rabbit. But that doesn't present a, a clear threat of any kind to the public. And even if that happened and somebody was walking down the street at the time, there is absolutely no indication that Annabelle would redirect in any way, shape or form towards the human being.
In Massachusetts, in any of the cases you've been involved with, have you ever determined that a dog is dangerous?
Yes.
And in your career, have you ever presided over or recommended that a dangerous dog or whatever the label is in what other state be euthanized?
Yes, I have. In fact, while I was with the Animal Control Agency in West Florida, out of about 110 complaints, I declared 71 of those dogs as meeting the state statute for dangerous and for run reason or another, either after appeal or failure of their owners to comply with the requirements of statute, most of those dogs were destroyed. Here in Jacksonville, there was a lesser number. In the year that I ran animal control, or a little bit less than a year, there were probably eight or nine cases that I heard. I upheld about half of them and I believe all of those were destroyed.
Is there anything about Annabelle or this case that I, I've missed or haven't asked you about or that you want to share with us?
No, I think we've covered pretty much it. I, I honestly, in looking at this case, looking at the individual circumstances and the, I would have loved to have seen the injuries pre-treatment. I believe I could have even given a better, more accurate assessment of them. But in this case, I would not find Annabelle to be a credible threat to public safety. She's obviously not a threat to her family. She's only exhibited any threat behavior when she was predictably reacting to a stranger on her property. And her reaction to the other dog in the other incident regarded a dispute over, over a bunny rabbit. And, and actually, in that case, her response was fairly minor and normal for a dog-dog interaction. She did not significantly affect that dog's life. She didn't, it wasn't a life-threatening incident. It was controlled and moderate.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure of the next step, but I've asked all my questions of Mr. Crosby. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Cohen. At this point, we'll open it up for the board to ask Mr. Crosby any questions they might have. I'll start with a couple. Mr. Crosby, thank you so much for your very detailed testimony. It's greatly appreciated. I'll start off kind of working my way backwards with what's freshest in my mind. You had just mentioned that you had wished that you had seen the injuries pre-treatment. Could you just talk about what would have changed in either your recommendation or your assessment of the incident, should you have had that opportunity?
Yes, I might have actually somewhat downgraded my assessment because from the pictures I have post-treatment, I cannot clearly tell the difference between any enlargement or debridement of the wound by the surgical team that addressed it versus the injuries. It is very, very common in dog bites because they involve puncturing the skin with a tooth that may, in fact, usually does have several different kinds of bacteria on it for the medical professionals to make a decision to enlarge and debrid or clean out the, the area that's been pierced. And that's a medical decision that a physician makes and different physicians in different hospitals with different resources make an entire ton of different decisions. But having seen it only after treatment, I can only look at what I've got. I can't see how much of that may have actually been caused by a reasonable physician doing his job.
Very good, thank you. Next, you had also mentioned that the issues related to the biting of the child would be easy to train out, something that could be done with a dedicated trainer and the appropriate resources. So Attorney Cohen, this one might be for you, but I was under the impression and I could be mistaken that Annabelle was in training prior to this event happening. Do you know if any of the recommended actions that Mr. Crosby just noted were part of that training curriculum?
I do not. I don't know if that trainer was given as clear of an agenda as we, as we have from Mr. Crosby that this, 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 if you, you can do this and this and this, and that's going to reduce the, the risk. I, so I, I can't answer that. But obviously whoever is the trainer would have that on the top of their agenda because we've already assessed what happened, what Annabelle did. So now a trainer could use Mr. Crosby's report to, to focus on what's necessary.
Very good, thank you. One last one before I pass it to my associates. Attorney Cohen, you had identified that there was a distinction difference between a dangerous dog bite and a nuisance dog bite. Was there something that you were using as the threshold for that differentiation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I believe this was sent, the board actually sent this out too. I'm looking at Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, the very first page, the law itself has about 10 or 12 pages with it. But the very first and front page of 140, Section 157, little A begins to, in little A, it says that, that's where the law says that no dog shall be deemed dangerous, colon, and then there's three options, under three circumstances. In this circumstance, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate under any of the following circumstances. And then little A1, big one, says the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack. And I just want to point out the two things I skipped over when a dog shouldn't be deemed dangerous based on barking and growling or based on its breed. So those aren't relevant here. So it's all from the first page of 140, 157.
Thank you. That was included in what we had sent out. But more of what I wanted to define was that it was situationally based as opposed to something like the Dunbar Scale and severity base. I know that it uses a subjective note of if it was grossly disproportionate, but it's not specifically defined as to, this is what the definition is between one versus the other. Thank you. I think that we've heard quite enough from me. I will pass it on to one of my associates, starting with Anita. Go right ahead.
Hi, you mentioned that you took photos of Annabelle's teeth, but you didn't share the photos in the packet. Can you tell us a little bit what you learned from the photos?
Yes, through the chair, I did have Ms. Mitchell take photos. And what I learned was that, number one, Annabelle's dentition is normal. She has four canines, two up, two down. She has six incisors top, six incisors bottom. None of them appear to be broken. None of them appear to be of unusual placement or spacing. She doesn't need braces. And that her canine teeth from tip to root of engagement, and understand that the tooth goes further than that up into the bone of the mandible and the maxilla, the jaw bones. But the exposed length of the upper and lower canines were approximately five eighths of an inch. And that was consistent across the several photographs that I had her take, within plus or minus an error of approximately one sixteenth of an inch.
Thank you. Last time, I was also going to ask, last time Attorney Cohen, with the other expert that was brought forward, made the statement that it was maybe not possible to have an accurate assessment of the dog without meeting the dog. But it appears that you have not met the dog. And I was wondering if you could share about the ability to assess the situation without meeting the dog?
My assessment is based on the analysis of the wounds inflicted in the reports. Can I predict what Annabelle would do if she was walked through a flock of pigeons without meeting her? No. Can I constructively and, and pretty accurately gauge her behavior in this incident from looking at the evidence? I would say. incident from looking at the evidence? I would say yes. I would prefer to have met Annabelle also, but unfortunately, due to COVID-19 and restrictions, that's not an option at this point. I have come up to Massachusetts in the past and physically evaluated dogs. So it would be good, but since we're talking about a specific incident that is documented, a more general evaluation of other sensitivities she might or might not have, whether she prefers raw hides to toys or whatever, was, is really not essential.
And were you able to review the doctor's notes of the procedures?
Yes, I did. And it said they didn't go into huge detail, but they did mention that they cleaned and sutured the wound.
I saw that that one puncture wound was four centimeters deep and another was two centimeters deep?
That's difficult to assess, really, especially looking at the tissue. By the time the doctors saw it, that's one of the hard things about objective or about putting numbers on things, because tissue swells, it's edema, it's the rushing of fluids into an area that has been insulted or wounded. So there's no indication as to whether, to what degree of edema or swelling had occurred on the leg. Four centimeters is an awfully long distance. That's over two inches. Annabelle's canines are only 5/8 of an inch deep. So I would question as to whether that was maybe a misjudgment, or if that was reaction to measuring the swelling, or how that figure was arrived at. But if Annabelle only has incisors that are 5/8 of an inch deep, which is just over a centimeter and a quarter centimeter and a half, I have no idea how they could have possibly come up with a four-centimeter deep bite.
Then it seems to me, and I'm just listening to your math, it seems to me if a level four is a half of a canine, then it doesn't have to be very deep for it to be a level four bite with Annabelle.
No, it would only have to be, well, half of 5/8, so two and a half eighths, so a quarter of an inch. And considering this was a young child, and the bite was to the leg, that would indicate to me that it was really probably unlikely to have been a whole lot deeper than that. I don't see any evidence, even in the post-treatment pictures, of major swelling, of black bruising. And if you look at the definition of a level four bite, you will see that it will also have deep bruising around the wound because the dog held on and bore down, or lacerations in both directions where the dog held and shook from side to side. That's not there.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thanks, Anita. Cici, any questions for Mr. Crosby?
I do. I will steer clear of anything having to do with math. I leave that to the educators. I'm just like wincing hearing the two, Mr. Crosby and Ms. Mecklenburg, discuss math. And I was like, whoo, skipping that. So I just have some questions. Some of them are more general in nature, just to sort of help me understand some of what you said. And I'm looking at, I have sort of a couple of pieces of information in front of me. I'm kind of, I've spread, and I apologize for that, but you can't see it. I'm just telling you what you hear is my paper. And what I have in front of me is the information regarding what happened at the first hearing and the report of Mr. Crosby, and then the statute you guys were just talking about, and some couple of my notes. And so there, I'm a linear thinker. We all know what I'm looking at. And when I'm looking at your reports, sir, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go page, I'm not gonna go page by page, but I'm gonna use the pages as reference. And skipping, nope, I'm gonna go back. You indicate in the report, and I said I was gonna go page by page, and then I lost my page. Here we go. Page eight. So the meat and potatoes of this report is page eight through 11. I think I may have a question for something earlier, but right now I'm on page eight. And you indicate under materials reviewed, and I know you mentioned this before, but I just want to, something you said, I was like, oh, what's that? And I wanted to learn a little bit more about it. And that is, you indicated you read the report of Hillary Cohen, animal control officer from Norfolk, and supplementary attachments. And what were the supplementary attachments that you were looking at? I'm wondering if there's something I don't have, because I just, was it pictures?
Through the chair, I'd have to go back and actually pull up my file. I know there's a report of the dog-on-dog incident with Indigo. There are records from Positively Dog Mobile Veterinary Services. There were, the photographs, for instance, came in to me right at the time that I was preparing the report and was hoping for better photographs. The photographs taken by Ms. Mitchell were not included in this report because they were still being done while I was doing the report. There were also, let me refer over here, said I have, as I said, two digital photographs, and actually, it's one photograph and a copy of the child's leg. I have an expert supposed letter from a Kelly Boland Consulting LLC, who gave an opinion on the bite, an opinion that I respectfully have to disagree with. I don't know what Ms. Boland or Mr. Boland, whoever, I don't know what their experience with dog bites actually is, and there's no indication as to when or whether they've ever been accepted as an expert in local, state, or federal courts. But the analysis that the, I disagree with the analysis that this person does not believe the management strategies are effective. I believe that keeping Annabelle in her yard on a reasonable secure tether and utilizing leashes and muzzle and the things that Mr. Cohen discussed are fully appropriate and applicable. I also have said the police reports, which only go to about three pages, the copy of the Dunbar scale. I have a copy of Section 157 up now on my desk. Those are pretty much what I've seen. They're, let me double check and, because I don't want to mistake.
Jim, did you see the copy of the vet bill and notes for the dog Indigo?
Yes, I mentioned that. I've got the notes on the dog Indigo, and that was the bill from Positively Mobile Veterinary Services regarding the dog, and it shows here, the dog Indigo, a canine, age 11 months, female spade. So yes, I've got those documents right here.
With, I guess one of the questions I had, and you just said it again, is you said the police reports. Is that something distinct from the ACO report?
Okay, apparently, I'm referring to it as a police report because it says at the top, Norfolk Police Department, 14 Sharon Avenue, Norfolk, Massachusetts.
Which is completely understandable. It's just that it says here, report of Hillary Cohen, animal control officer, and then you indicated, and then police report. So I was just making sure there wasn't some, he's a person I hadn't seen. No, no, no worries. Certainly says.
I wasn't sure where Ms. Cohen fits into the police department structure. In some cases, that's a police report. In both of my agencies, we did our reports independent of the police department, even though we were technically under their oversight. So it changes in different places.
Absolutely, it completely varies. So no, I was just hanging on the fact that I, what I had heard, and it's not necessarily what you said, but what I had heard was that you had a report of Hillary Cohen and various police reports. And so I was like flipping through, I'm not, but usually I keep track somewhat with some stickies of my paper. So that was it. So no worries. So I've got the same paper in front of me that you have in front of you. You also indicated, and I know it's not in your report, but you did indicate when chatting with Attorney Cohen, that you, or it might have been somebody else, that you had also spoken with the dog's owner, I believe you said briefly, a time or two.
Yes. I spoke with Ms. Mitchell once about the case, and then we had, actually, I think it was two different conversations about the photographs I wanted, one where I gave her directions, and one where she had sent me the photographs and asked if they were good enough, because getting her dogs, her dog Annabelle, to hold her head still long enough to put a ruler up against it and get her lips, it can be a pain.
I can't even, I cannot even imagine trying to get my dogs to do that. So kudos. And when you talked with her about the incident, how long did you guys speak for?
Probably 20 minutes, maybe 30.
Was she present at the time of the bite?
I don't believe she actually was. I believe that according to the reports and the best of my recollection of the discussion, the dog was put out by, I think it's her mother, and that the two boys were by themselves out playing in the yard. I believe she said she was at work, but that, I may be hallucinating that.
No, I mean, and again, I'm not disputing you. I just have, that's basically my recollection as well. So you spoke, did you speak with her mom?
No, I did not.
The, all right, I'm just gonna flip forward. So page eight as well. So other than talking with Melissa, reading and reviewing the photos that you indicated, that you reviewed, did you listen to or watch the video from the first day of the dangerous dog hearing?
No, I did not.
Okay. Did you read any notes that were taken, or anything to do, like rather than going through the whole thing, anything? Did you have a chance to look at or read or review anything having to do with the hearing on the 27th?
No, 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 and no.
Well, that makes it so much easier for me. Check. So with respect to this assertion that the child was wearing a mask, I can't find it, and maybe you can help me, because you probably can, like I said, lots of information. I reread the notes from the first day of hearing and the incident report, and I, the first I heard of a mask was one of the dog owner's champions in the sort of public comment section. So where's the evidence that he was wearing a mask? And I understand it's COVID, and people probably, I mean, it's entirely possible that it's here, but I know that it's something that people ping on, and I just can't find it. That's making me a little freaky.
Okay, let me, I'm looking real quickly here, because it was mentioned in discussion with Ms. Mitchell. She mentioned that the child had the mask on. I believe it was also written, but again, I'm trying to find it honestly right now.
No problem. I'm sure Attorney Cohen can, is also digging it up. But if it's just, it was Ms. Mitchell that was mentioning it, if that's the case, she wasn't there, right?
As far as I know, she was not physically there.
I'm just gonna keep moving on, because I know I can see my chair giving me the hairy eyeball, because I have a tendency to go far afield. And so I'm gonna skip over a couple of stuff and quickly come back to it at the end. You go down, skipping something that I want to leave to the end, but going to the opinions section, which is page nine. I just, you have six paragraphs with a couple of subsections in your report under the opinions section. And the first two address her, Annabelle's breed. And I don't think, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that there has been any concern, mention about what kind of a dog Annabelle is. I understood that she's mixed-breed, came from a pound. There's no way to know who her parents were. She didn't come with papers. So I'm wondering why of the six paragraphs, two address what she is or isn't?
I was asked to.
Well, you know, what's going on in the, in an expert's mind, when, you know, why is that here? Why is that relevant to me?
Although it doesn't seem to have been brought up prior to this, Mr. Cohen and I discussed it, and it is very common across the United States for agencies or legislation to try and attribute breed and behavior as being related. So I very commonly, if it's an incidence where the dog is not, for instance, in a case I'm working, is a purebred Malinois, then I will often include in my reports a comment simply to the fact that, based on my observation of the dog, I have no idea what they are. And as such, I'm not making any assessments myself based on breed or appearance of the dog as to whether there is or is not any link between their appearance and the behavior. So it wasn't alleged, but it comes up so often that a lot of times I go ahead, especially over the last couple of years, it comes up so often as a question that a lot of times I'll go ahead and simply include that, just so we've got that covered in case anybody brings it up later.
All right. Well, I guess that makes sense, but then you just, what I don't understand is you just said that sometimes you'll have to opine as to a particular breed and their propensity for a particular behavior. Is that even really a thing, that some breeds would have a propensity? I mean, other than I do, as a full disclosure, I do have a rough-coated collie, and folks, thinking of buying an animal at home, they do only want to herd things. Throw that out as an aside, and they're noisy about it, because the shepherds in Scotland were several mountains away. So back to you, sir, I apologize for going far afield. The rest of the, of the board is used to this. But is that even a thing, where that there's certain things that a particular breed may exhibit as, by way of behavior?
Scientifically, no. In the public opinion, in part of the public, and in the opinion of some legislators, yes, there are supposed dangerous propensities attached to some breeds. The science says no. The genetics says no. But again, that's a fight I have to wind up dealing with a lot of time, just because, for instance, you have a Labrador, you may have a wonderful, soft, easygoing dog, but you may throw a tennis ball, and it may say, if you want the tennis ball, go get it yourself. You have a rough collie, they do tend to herd, but I'm sure you've probably also seen collies that would just as soon lay on the sofa and watch TV and tell you to go get your own bloody sheep.
Fair enough. So in the next question that I have, and I again, do apologize for bouncing around, I'm gonna go back to the materials, underneath the materials covered. And that's in the facts of the case. And I'm gonna scroll down to G, which Attorney Cohen was correct. He was, he was, he was gonna address the pink elephant in the room, get it out of the way, because he knew folks like get it out of the way because he knew folks like me were potentially gonna wade in and also want to talk about pink elephants. And you talk about the other, the subsequent report in two spaces in your report. And one is at G, where you indicate that the alleged incident was not reported nor mentioned until animal control was digging into, began digging, forgive me, into past, possible past allegations. And my question is, how do you know that? Where did you get that information from?
It was actually stated in the animal control officer's report. That after, and I'm trying to find the exact position. Okay, that's the original bite.
Oh, you're talking about the report you reviewed, the 729 report or the original report? That's a guess.
I'm talking, right now, I'm looking at the report for the incident 2020-0000-5716. This shows an edit date of, for this section of 16, 15 or 16, I might have squinted at it. That states that on the 13th, the officer responded to the bite at 90 Bordenman Street. Durant states that in the previous incident, it wasn't reported because it happened, okay, that was the other dog-dog incident. And I'm looking to see where the dates refer. Because somewhere, and it may have been in the other piece of paper, but the, apparently, the animal control officer in the documents had followed up and discovered the previous bite to the child in the rear end. And I'm trying to find where I've gotten that report. I'm sorry, I'm bringing it up now. And in that case, it was clear that that report wasn't generated until after this incident. So the animal control officers or officer went back and recovered another incident. Like I'm looking. It says, for instance, on June 15th, the letter from Ms. Cohen that it has bitten the dog in the past while at large. And there's mention of another bite incident previous to that, but there's no report as it wasn't reported at the time. So that, and that's dated the 15th. So that tells me that Ms. Cohen obviously didn't know about that incident when this one occurred on the 13th of June. That's the Norfolk Animal Control Letter to the town administrator from Ms. Cohen.
So that, so that's, that makes sense. I guess my question was, you said it was not reported nor mentioned until animal control began digging into possible past allegations, which I guess, and I'll sort of jump ahead. If you look at the, if you were to watch the hearing or read the minutes of the hearing, the report from the parents of the child, and you kind of touch upon it here, but you sort of, I'm sure inadvertently skip over one of the reasons why the child was afraid of the other, was afraid of the dog. The child reported that he knew he had, the dog had bitten before, which is why he wanted to get out of the way. And so while I understand that it's not reported, it's a different issue. I'll get to procedure in a second. I just wonder at the idea that this was more the ACO digging into past allegations when I have the statement from the parents at the hearing indicating that, given the history of the dog, his son wanted to get out of reach of the run. And to be candid, he, all the parent recited was, given the history of the dog, the son wanted to get out of the way. And then I'm, that's me, right? I'm the one going, oh, that's interesting, tell me more. I would say, what do you mean, given the history of the dog? At which point it was indicated that, about the prior incident. I understand it's a prior incident, and I understand it's in your world, unreported. But it does not appear to me, and I'm just wondering if it makes a difference, it does not appear to me to be somebody digging into possible past allegations wherein it was suaspante from this child, the reason why he viewed getting out of the way of Annabelle as a good idea. So I'm just wondering.
Those words were my words to Jim because the report is dated 7/29, two days after the last hearing. So digging into, I think that probably could have come through me with.
Fair enough. Again, like I said, I'm just trying to figure out where all of the pieces come from. The next, then I'll skip a portion of the phrase. Mr. Crosby, on page nine, I'm at page nine. I'm on the second, I guess I'm on the top line, first new sentence of page nine. And the first part of it, I have no issue with. There is no physical evidence supporting this allegation. I think I agree, I don't know that there is any other than maybe some text communications. But, and then you wrote, "And all medical care for that alleged incident was supposedly administered by the victim's mother, who is a veterinarian and is not licensed to practice medicine upon human patient." And just a couple of quick questions. The first is, again, you know me, where did you get the fact that the, other than, I'll make it easy. There's the, I'm looking at the July 29, 2020 incident report of ACO Cohen, wherein she reports that the parent, hold on, I'll get it. The bite broke the skin on both cheeks. She treated her child at home for the injuries until they healed. Where in that report, or is there something else, somewhere else, that reflects that the treatment rose to the level that would require a medical professional, doctor, people doctor?
I'm not saying that it did. I don't know whether it does or not, or did or not, because number one, as I'm not a physician, I don't know where that line is drawn in the state of Massachusetts. And there's no documentation of how bad that injury was. Is it understandable? Sure, she's a parent. But whatever it was, it would indicate to me that it was not serious enough. Also, that she needed to involve a human physician. I, for instance, doubt that a veterinarian, even on her own child, would have done sutures and installing drains and doing reconstructive surgery.
No, you'd get me to agree with you on that point. And perhaps I was just misreading. It just felt somewhat editorial that she was not licensed to practice medicine upon human patients. But you're simply opining that likely the injury was not so severe that the child required medical care.
Right.
Beyond a parent.
Exactly, beyond what any parent would have done. To me, that was illustrative of the fact that it was undoubtedly a minor engagement that didn't require a human physician.
The next questions that I have, because I know I'll speed it up because I don't want to lose everybody. With respect to opinions, again, the, it's your professional opinion based on years of working with dogs. Oh, that reminds me, when you recite the cases that you've been involved with as an expert witness, and I'm assuming on countless times sworn in as an expert during voir dire, did you, those are all surrounding, are they all surrounding dogs? Like as the top?
Yes, it all, they all have to do with dogs in one way or another. None of these, for instance, go back to any of the criminal cases that I worked over the 22-plus years as a police officer. And frankly, I couldn't give you a list of those if I stayed up all night and tried to.
No, 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 nor would I ask you to. I just, I know when you had, you've gotten, you have a list here from 2016. I imagine that you're not testifying based upon your training and experience as a narcotics officer for the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office in 2016, unless it's, you've had the same problems with your chemists as we have here in Massachusetts. But that's a different issue for another day. So when you were chatting with Mr. Cohen, you indicated a bunch of dog cases of all manner. And so I just was sort of making sure they all sort of fell under the rubric of.
Yes, and in fact, the dog cases actually go back in court to 2005, being one of the first times that I appeared in court. But most of the time, and that's why I actually probably should, at the end of this year, drop off everything from 2016 because most attorneys and the federal court system, for instance, require the last four years of cases. And so not to burn a bunch of paper, there's probably 10 years that aren't there.
With respect to the cases that you indicated to Mr. Cohen that you've been involved in in Massachusetts, how many of them were sort of that, all, no offense to us, but sort of this lower level municipal case? How many municipal cases have you been involved with in Massachusetts?
Let me look real quick and count. One, two, this one, let's see, four, five. That's in Massachusetts, so.
That's it, that's it. And I'm not gonna ask you, I'm not interested in, not that it's not awesome, but I'm not interested in anything above municipal for today. And in each of those cases, you were talking about dogs, correct?
Correct.
And your role is the dog guy, correct? And I don't mean to minimize you, I'm just, you're a dog.
Well, my role is to consult on dog behavior. And sometimes that's for the dog as the dog guy. And sometimes if it's a case where they need my expertise and I can stand behind it, it's for the victims of bites, where I will opine on the severity of the and significance of a bite to a victim. So yes, I'm the dog guy, but not just for the dogs.
I got you. But if I was looking for someone to opine as to a bite I received from a cranky pony, I would go to the pony guy.
Yes.
Or the dog guy.
I'm a city kid and don't do horses.
Page nine, farm animals are off limits, right?
Yep.
Page nine, paragraph four is where I'm headed next. Again, with respect to paragraphs four, eight through, golly. Well, I guess I'll go through each paragraph. A, you indicate again that the child was wearing a face covering and a hat. And again, it's your, is, this information came from Ms. Mitchell, correct?
Yes.
Then in the next paragraph that discusses some of your opinion as to dogs being well-known to be sensitive to unfamiliar matters of dress, then you indicated in the next one that she was released out the back, which is normal. And that in the next paragraph, you indicate that Annabelle was accustomed to exercising without the boys present in the tether-controlled area. And again, how do you know that?
That was a question I specifically asked Ms. Mitchell that, you know, did the boys usually play out where and when Annabelle was using the facilities on her tether or whatever? And she indicated to me that that was not a usual occurrence.
Do you know, is she employed?
I don't know, I didn't ask her.
I just wasn't sure if she was at work at the time of the incident. But I'll move on. Paragraph E, so four E. You state that the victim was, according to his mother, within the tether-controlled area when he saw Annabelle Rose and moved towards the perimeter, correct?
Yes.
And where did you get the information that it was his mother who reported where he was?
I'm sorry, I may have misworded that. And that may have actually been, the location may have been based on the reports and the statements of Ms. Mitchell being the other child's mother. So I may have gotten that crossed up.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Reports and so forth indicate the boys were both within the area where obviously Annabelle could reach on the tether.
So, and that makes sense because my next question, sort of as a result of seeing that, again, harkening back to the hearing that was reported and the minutes from that hearing, the father of the child, the victim, was the person who testified in the first instance. And he indicated that his son didn't run away or do any quick motions that would have provoked anything, sort of by design. You have in here, it is entirely reasonable to expect the victim may have fled away from Annabelle at more than a walk in pace. But that's just your guess based upon your interaction with children who are afraid of dogs?
And that's why I say, if such occurred, fleeing of the child would potentially be more of a provocation. In other words, you know, you've got a dog that we've already seen has chased down a rabbit. So if the child did rapidly go away, that would just simply add to the potential issues that the dog was reacting to.
Right. It's less, if I understand you correctly, it is more understandable if the child were to run.
Yes, that would be an additional complicating factor.
And you're gonna stop, this is gonna be crazy, but where are you getting this bunny from? I can't find a bunny in any of my paperwork. And that doesn't mean, again, that it's not here. I'm just wondering if that came from.
I'm looking here because in, oh, that's not.
Beach cough, excuse me, I just can't find a bunny.
There was discussion and I, like I said, trying to find the actual line and report, dog on dog, okay. That's the sliding. There was, there were statements that the dog that, I'm trying to find it, that the dog that Annabelle bit was out chasing a rabbit and that Annabelle became part of the chase. And I'm trying to see where that came from. Because, now I didn't just hallucinate that one either.
While we wait, Mr. Chair, can I just clarify something about where some of this information has come from?
Go right ahead.
I just submitted to the board Attorney Mello the statement from Vincent Brady. That's my client's son. And I hadn't previously submitted it. It's unsigned, but I suppose it doesn't matter at this level, where he states that what the victim boy was wearing in terms of a mask and a hat. Thank you. So I forwarded that to you. It's, if you want to share it, that's fine. But that's where the statements Mr. Crosby is relying on came from regarding those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Crosby, while you're looking, and I'm somewhat impressed because it feels like you're looking at a bunch of different screens, and I'm a little jealous of that. But while you're looking, did you read Vincent Brady's unsigned statement?
I believe that's part of the package here. I don't see it right now, but I also know that I discussed with Mr. Cohen that there was such a statement, so.
I don't see it on page eight under your materials reviewed. Did it come in after the photos that you weren't able to put in here too?
It was probably based, I don't see the document, but I know that Mr. Cohen and I had a discussion.
Fair enough. Um, the next question I have, do, 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 moving down to paragraph, um, oh, well, I guess in paragraph five, you, you discuss the fact, um, which kind of sort of circles back kind of nicely, if I do say so myself, with the, um, the scale that you guys have been chatting about. And that is in paragraph five, you indicate that this situation, regrettable though it was, was a relatively minor incident. Um, and, um, avoidable and does not indicate behavior that would present a danger to the public, correct?
Yes.
And is it true that from your perspective, uh, if a child requiring surgery, um, still falls within the relatively minor incident or injury scale?
Uh, it would still fall under the, the level three scale because one of the reasons the bite scale exists is because, uh, we do not want to try to judge the severity or, um, comparable, uh, effects of dog bites based on medical treatments. Uh, different doctors, different facilities have different procedures and, and, and practices. And quite frankly, if, um, in Boston, for instance, if, to be honest, if a child came in there with a bite to their rear end, um, that was not very serious and did not have good insurance, um, the medical decisions might be different than a child that came in from a more prosperous area of, of the, the town that had, uh, excellent insurance. Um.
Just to chime in for a second, just for, for the sake of time, you don't know, right? I, I don't either. I mean, I know what town they live in, obviously, because they were the neighbor. Neither of us, to, to my knowledge, maybe you do know, um, what the socioeconomic background is of this child's family or what insurance they have or what, what, um, what the hospital's decisions are, correct?
No, and that's why the, the medical treatment is regarded separately and is not part of the comparative bite scale. That's why we look at the, the geometry location and, um, uh, quantifiable parts of the bite rather than.
I understand that, but you indicated in paragraph five, you're not talking about the bite scale at that point. You just said that this was a relatively minor incident, correct?
And relatively minor to me is one that, uh, occurs within the parameters of a level three bite.
Oh, but not, not in terms of how it's experienced by the child or their family?
Subjective experience is.
I understand that. Um, it, it is a strictly objective to you.
Correct. The emotional values are totally separate.
So, um, did you review anything? So I guess you looked at Vincent Brady's statement or you talked about his statement. And his statement, um, did not exist at the time of the first hearing, correct?
Um, I don't remember, or I don't know personally when it existed. I know that, uh, as I said, Mr. Cohen and I had discussions, um, before my preparation of this report and before the, uh, the, uh, I think it was, you know, before the, uh, first hearing, I believe.
Uh, you, you had speak, you had spoken with Mr. Cohen before the first hearing?
Um, I, I quite frankly, I don't, what date was the first hearing? Cause there's been.
Twenty seventh, I think.
He probably did.
The twenty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, and most likely he did speak to me before that hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, and were you.
We've had several conversations.
Were you shown, um, the, the new report that was just sent to us from Vincent, um, prior to the first hearing?
No, I don't have the document that was sent today. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure uh, what that is. Again, I, I believe the discussions about the, um, the clothing and so forth were from the discussions that I had with Mr. Cohen over a number of occasions.
Okay, fair enough. Um, the, so moving along again, mindful of time, you indicate that you were former, well, I guess you said you're, I think, still currently an animal control officer, but you were former animal control chief operating officer, correct?
Correct. I was at, in one agency, I, my title was the division manager of the animal control division here in Jacksonville. Um, the position was chief, however, as a retired police officer from Jacksonville. Um, there's a prohibition against, uh, being hired full-time to an appointed position. So I was hired on under contract. Uh, my title there was division management or department management consultant. But in effect, uh, I was the chief of the, the agency. And I answered to the chief administration officer of the city of Jacksonville, um, a man named Sam Musa.
And how long were you in that role? From when to when?
I was brought in in Ma- in March of 2016 due to some severe problems. And I served through the end of December, at which point we, uh, changed my status from a, a full-time status to being as needed and not based there due to, um, issues that the city of Jacksonville and the Jacksonville Police and Fire Pension Fund, which is an independent fund which pays me, um, we're having some political disagreements because our pension fund has about two and a half billion dollars with a B that the city of Jacksonville would love to spend. So there was some politics going on and, and so I was backed out to an as-needed, um, contract, uh, provider, which remained all the way through the, uh, this year we didn't renew it, but, uh, that was through 2019.
And, um, but for, for a full-time staff paid position, salaried however it was, full-time position was March to December of 2016, did you say?
Yes, from, from, uh, March to, uh, uh, December 31st of 2016 is when I was the functioning as the chief here of animal care and protective services for the city of Jacksonville.
And, um, going back to paragraph six, you state that be, sort of because this, is it because the report arrived after the hearing first was initiated? Or is it because, um, it was undocumented that it's, it, it's an issue for you?
The fact that it was undocumented and that there's no, um, there are no reports, there are no records of calls being made, the, uh, the child's mother stated clearly that she didn't report it. Um, basically going back to, you know, my police background, um, with some rare exceptions, uh, such as very serious crimes. If it's not reported, it didn't happen. Um, it, you, we, we can't proceed. And I, I can tell you, and here in Florida, we cannot proceed unless an incident is reported and verified with, uh, an affidavit to support what happened and done so in a timely manner. So.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second because you're talking about two things that I'm not sure that they're necessarily, and we can agree to disagree, um, over a beer when the Corona ends, but, um, you're talking about Florida and you're talking about, um, swearing out a complaint. So if there's, um, probable cause for the complaint to issue. And I guess my more general question, um, is that, uh, at least in Massachusetts where one has, uh, and so long as they're not, um, that the probative value isn't outweighed by the prejudicial effect, prior bad acts, if we're talking general criminal or prior incidences, let's use domestic violence as an example, where, um, certainly we're not going to tell a, a putative victim of domestic violence that because this is the first time that she's finally gotten the, the guts up to call the police, we're not going to have the DA, um, tell the jury about the others. And again, like I said, agree to disagree. Just quickly, assuming, just putting the procedural aside, because I respect your position on the procedural. In the event that this was a bite that, um, if there were a bite, let's just take it out of this realm for a second. If there were a bite that were reported, that was a prior bite, same level of rights, but bitten on both butt cheeks, didn't require anything more from mom, but bitten on both butt cheeks, prior bite, would that at a minimum be relevant?
If it was under the same circumstances, I would consider that to be a flag as to a need for addressing the circumstances that led that to that to happen. So if that would be, you know, saying, okay, you can't have the dog out in the yard with kids or something. Uh, in that case, it would be relevant. I don't believe it would be relevant to a determination of dangerous or vicious or nuisance or whatever.
Um, all right. Well, I'm just going to quickly then go to the report just ever so briefly. Um, and in the report, uh, and if you haven't read this report, just let me know and I can talk, uh, I'll have attorney, I mean attorney, there's, there's a lot of Cohens here today. Hillary Cohen, ACO Cohen, um, opine. But if you have read the report, in the report, there was a child, their age has been redacted, who was playing in, um, the backyard of the home where the dog was tied up. The child reported that he quote, knew that the dog didn't like him, um, didn't like her son, um, went too close to where the dog was tied, um, and then was bitten twice, once in each butt cheek, um, which broke the skin, but to your point, was treated at home. It further indicates that, um, owner of the dog, Ms. Mitchell, carried the child back to the mother's house and then, um, that she communicated to the child's mother through text messages, um, stating that, uh, would she be willing to have the child come over? Um, if the dog trainer came over as well to participate in some training? If all of that was information that, um, didn't, um, have troubling to your mind procedural, i- is that relevant?
The, the desire to have the child come over with the parents' permission to, uh, while the trainer was there is actually a pretty constructive suggestion as it would allow you to, under controlled circumstances, try to get past whatever was or was not between the dog and the child to, uh, improve that relationship. That would be perfectly, uh, that would be relevant and that would be, uh, a good move.
What about the dog biting a child? Is that, uh, uh, relevant information?
If the dog bit another child, it would depend on, again, the seriousness and the conditions and the, um, the, the entire circumstance.
I hear you. I'll move along. Um, I just have a few last ones. One of the things that, um, Ms. Mitchell spoke about when she was here, um, here, the last time, was that, um, the child had, the child, forgive me, that the dog had had, um, puppies in the past, which, um, may provide a reason why, um, the dog would have lashed out. Is that something that you're familiar with?
I'm familiar that with having read the statement of the person from the pet daycare that made that sort of a statement. Um, that I can't put any kind of particular credence to for several reasons. Number one, um, the dog did not have puppies on the ground or even have, uh, puppies that had been had in the last year or two at the time of this incident. There, there were no puppies around. In fact, uh, since she was adopted, uh, from a shelter, she would have been spayed on adoption. So there wouldn't have been puppies, period. Secondly, although, um, I have to, you know, in the, uh, letter from Steve Connolly, Stephen Connolly from the Dog House is what I'm referring to. Um, there's no indication that this person is, um, anything other than a person running a doggy daycare. And, uh, he makes several statements that, um,
I'm just.
We have a different, a, a difference in professional background and, and opinion. So, uh, um, I, I, I can't put a whole lot of stock in, in his statement that, uh, her had, quote, her having a litter of puppies prior would bolster this opinion. Number one, they didn't, she didn't, not at their house. And just having puppies, unless the puppies were actively present and she was defending them, for instance, while nursing, really wouldn't have a whole lot of effect on her behavior one way or the other.
Uh, which kind of, that's real, that's kind of what I was thinking, not from any level of experience, but I was just sort of wondering if there, especially where you don't know, I don't think, that's my recollection of the testimony, we don't know what kind of a life Annabelle was leading, um, prior to her arriving, um, uh, in safe haven.
No, we have no idea.
It, it, it just seems like it, it could be, it could be good and it could very, um, easily also be bad. Um, so that was, that was why that question. Um, you also indicated that, uh, level three is the most common, that 95% of the bites are level of, of the actual bites, right? Because I understand level one is.
That are reported, yeah.
And then, uh, they're minor. To the, to your point about reported, and I know we kind of went over this, it's just a last minute question that I thought about. Um, have you ever, um, investigated or been an expert in an instance where unreported, um, bites proved to be salient information that would have been useful?
I've never seen a case where a, a significant bite went unreported. Uh, for instance, one that required, uh, response to a hospital or a doctor because those are mandated reporters.
But I'm just saying, if you had a report of a bite that was bad enough that the child couldn't walk home. So it got their attention certainly and required treatment and perhaps has a little scarring. So more than just, you know, trying to break up two dogs at a dog park and then rubbing some dirt on it and walking away. Has that ever been the fact of a prior bite that's not hospitalized or anything? Has that ever been useful information for you?
Not really, because I don't like trying to make a professional scientifically accurate assessment based on something that I have no documentation of, nothing to really indicate other than a, a he said, she said.
So then you indicate that it tells, when you were reading through, just switching away for a second, running down to the wire. When you, um, were talking with Mr. Cohen, um, you indicated that it was your sense that because she was, um, the way you perceived the bite from your review of the two photos, as well as the bite photos that you had, um, Ms. Mitchell take, that she was, that this is how she communicates, correct?
No, that's not what I said. What I said was that dogs biting, dogs use their teeth to communicate and to warn, both with con specifics, in other words, other dogs, and with, uh, human beings. So all dogs that I have ever met or heard of, um, and, you know, there may be an aberrant dog out there somewhere, but dogs use body language. And if those, um, warnings are not heated, they can use vocalizations or they can use their teeth to communicate their discomfort and to try to gain relief or space from a potential threat. It's nothing particular to Annabelle.
Oh, no, no, I, 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 I respect and appreciate the clarification. When you indicated, uh, what you indicated, or I've written it down this way, doesn't mean it's verbatim. I write slowly. You said, so it tells me, you, so it tells you she communicates in this manner to tell somebody to stop, she would use her teeth, um, and that there are other dogs who do that as well. Um, I think.
All of them do.
Uh, I think that's, I think, I think that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, can I clarify something for the witness, Ms. Van Tye?
Go right ahead.
I gotta turn my mute off. I gotta mute me. Hold on.
On, um, on July 23rd, we all, uh, the board, myself, my client, received from Judith Lozardi, um, 159-page packet and anticipated. 159-page packet in anticipation of July 27th hearing. On page seven of that packet, which Mr. Crosby received, not at that time, but after, there's a statement, it says, "Minor's account of dog incident, accounts given 7/16/20," I'm not sure who they were given to, but this was in the packet, and the first sentence for July 2017, and this is the boy who was the most recent incident, who also was walking Indigo at the time Indigo was attacked, first sentence, "While I was walking Indigo in the backyard on a retractable leash, which should never be used, she spotted a bunny and chased it."
That's where it came from.
Idea of a bunny came from, and then why, just below that, June 13th, 2020, same person, same sheet, page seven of the 159-page packet that we all got, he's describing Annabelle running over, and he says above, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, "So I turned and walked quickly toward where Annabelle can't go, toward the edge of her run." So that answers the question whether it was a walk or a run, it was a walk quick, quickly, and Ms. Crosby was taking this information from the very submission to the board. Thank you.
If I could just qualify, I appreciate the bunny, that one was just making me bananas because I couldn't find it. But with respect to the idea that walking quickly amounts to fleeing, I just questioned the sort of determination, not so much where, not so much where that he had received the information, because it...
Well, this was clearly, this was written by an adult who wanted to make sure they didn't say that their child ran. I mean, some of the words in here...
Well, I'm not gonna get into...
Okay, whoa, 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 all right, everybody, hold on, hold on, hold on. I think we clarified where everything came from, we determined the source.
That was all I wanted and I...
I don't want to get into... Yeah, I just don't want to get into speculating as to the origin of these statements and where they came from. I don't think that's really pertinent to what we're discussing here. So thank you very much, C.C. I would say that I had some more questions for you, Mr. Crosby, but I'm fairly certain that C.C. asked all the questions that exist. So with that, we will be moving on to our animal control officer. Hillary, if you're still with us, is there anything that you would like to offer or add that has not been previously discussed? And if there isn't, it's perfectly fine for you to say, no, nothing new to add, but I did want to give you the opportunity to be able to contribute anything else from your perspective.
So very quick and very short, I know everybody's got more things to do. So the reason that this was investigated, the 7/29 incident, 2027/441, was because it was stated in the hearing previously on the 27th, or was it the 27th, yes, that there was a prior bite, and I wanted to know just what happened in that situation. And that's, that's why I looked. I had no knowledge of the address or who the victim was in that situation. Prior to that point, it was all hearsay. Other than that, I would just respectfully ask that if there is time at the end, that if some of the loose ends could be cleared up by the Bechkovskys, and if there could be, you know, a consensus from our behaviorists as to everything that has been said tonight as well. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thanks, Hillary. And yeah, all those parties will have an opportunity to speak at designated points throughout the rest of the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll talk through on the board for anybody who has any additional questions for Animal Control Officer Cohen. Anita, I'm seeing a head shake for no. C.C.?
Just, just really quickly, and I think I already know the answer to this, but I don't mean to sort of assume, get something into evidence that, whatever, that I'm assuming. The last time you were examined by all of us, did you go through your background?
I believe I did. I honestly, I do not remember.
I won't, I won't go back through it, I just note that there's been some sort of, you know, I can't find it, but the type is like really tiny, so that was my only question. I don't have anything else. If she believes she did, I trust her and I don't have any questions.
I believe that it was in the public information request that was brought forward by Mr. Cohen, and I believe that everybody on the board may have seen that public information request. So instead of digging out from 300 pages of paperwork, I'm gonna believe that I did state it last time.
Nothing further.
Thank you, C.C., and thank you, Hillary. Attorney Cohen, I know I'm kind of yelling across the room here, but did you have anything for Animal Control Officer Cohen before we move on?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I will move on to Ms. Bolin. I don't know if you're on the call or not, but we did want to give you the opportunity to provide any new information or perspective based on what Mr. Crosby had shared tonight. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. I do have quite a few things that I would like to comment on, so I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can. I'm gonna start with Mr. Crosby's designation, well, let me put it this way, I'm gonna start with my designation, my opinion that this was a level four bite. The reason I said it was a level four bite based on the Dunbar scale was because in the medical record, it says that there was a four-centimeter gaping laceration that into, into the subcutaneous fat with subcutaneous fat protruding. And so I, you know, to me, that would indicate that the dog's canine tooth went more than half the length. And so that's why I said that this was most likely a level four bite. Of course, we talked at length at the last hearing whether or not we had that, the fact, because nobody measures the bites and such like that. With all due respect to Dr. Crosby and his, or Mr. Crosby and his background, that is why I said this is most likely a level four bite. I also would like to say something about what he turned, when he was saying that he believes this is a level three bite and a minor one at that, I disagree with that, but I also want to make it a point of making a comment on something he said about what Dr. Dunbar's scale says about a level four bite, and he indicated not too long ago that that a level four bite, in addition being half the length, more than half the length of canine tooth, also causes bruising and/or tearing. And if you read the Dunbar scale, which I just referred to, I can tell you that it does not say that, it says that one to four punctures from a single bite with at least one puncture deeper than half the length of the dog's canine tooth may also have deep bruising around the wound. It doesn't say that it would have deep bruising around the wound. So I just wanted to clarify that. I know Mr. Crosby knows the scale well, but whether he misspoke or not, I needed to clarify that. Okay, so, so that's the first thing. The second thing, and I have notes, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna just read my notes. Mr. Crosby states that Annabelle only bit one time rather than repeated engagements, and the fact that the bite was limited to a single controlled engagement shows restraint and control by Annabelle. I find this not to comport with the encounter because Annabelle was tethered. She was tethered and the boy was retreating out of her tether zone, and if we can all picture what we have heard described to us, as the boy was leaving the tether zone, the dog then grabbed his leg. And so the fact that the boy was then able to get out of the tether zone would tell us, wouldn't tell us whether or not she would have continued to bite him if he was, hadn't been able to get away from her, or the tether had not stopped her. Another thing that I'd like to talk about, he said, basically, he's saying that this is normal behavior, and while, while it is normal behavior for a dog to exhibit territorial behavior, it is also normal behavior for a dog to be alarmed by a person maybe wearing strange attire. It is not acceptable or safe behavior for a dog to inflict a broken skin bite to such intruder, especially when the intruder's a child that was invited to play in the yard. And I also want to state that dogs have a lot of behavioral options in situations like this. In this case, if the dog was concerned with there being a child wearing a mask and a hat in his territory, Annabelle could have barked at the child from a distance, she could have run at the child, barking or not, she could have growled at the child, she could have snarled at the child, she could have snapped at the child, a level one air snap, she could have inflicted an inhibited bite, a level two or partially, you know, or a level three bite, but she didn't do any of those, she went straight to a level four bite. Again, my estimation of the bite, and we can disagree on that all day, I was just going by what I read in the report, the fact that the medical team said that there was subcutaneous fat protruding, that the, that the puncture wound went into the subcutaneous fat, would tell me that it is a level four bite. Another thing, Mr. Crosby calls the victim child a potential threat and intruder, yet the child made no movement towards the dog and did not provoke the bite in any way other than to move away from the dog. It's hard to believe that a child who was invited to play in a yard and was not interacting with the dog in any way could be a potential threat to the dog. So I just wanted to make that statement. I also would like to say that Mr. Crosby states that no one, no one is in danger from this dog as long as they are not present within the area defined as Annabelle's tether restraint. My recommendations in this case, my recommendations in this case were that there needs to be a fence around the yard with no gate. And the reason that I made that recommendation is because of the behavior of children. Children go in and out of yards of neighbors, especially when playmates live in that home. And so to be, you know, extra careful that no child would unwittingly come into the yard, knowing that Annabelle has also, has already bitten one, at least one child, and now we know two in the same situation. Mr. Crosby or, or Mr. Cohen, I can't remember which one, said what the owner is willing to do now, making a tether shorter and, you know, not allowing the kids in the yard when she's outside. Again, my worry with Annabelle is that a child, an unwitting child, would enter this yard to play with the son, to, you know, come over, just the ball went over the fence, you know, went into the yard, whatever, not realize Annabelle's on her tether, be sitting on the deck, pretty soon Annabelle's running out to her. So I felt the safest thing to do in this case, which is why my recommendation was to have a fence with no gate, so that all egress and ingress into that yard would be through the house, so the child would have to be invited into the house. I also would like to just comment on some of the stuff Mr. Crosby said about the behavior modification that we could do for Annabelle to improve her association with children, and I've been doing this for 20 years, working with, with dogs that show aggressive behavior and working with the owners of those dogs to modify the behavior. And I can tell you, in every case where it involves a child who has been bitten, this sort of systematic desensitization and counter conditioning, what Mr. Cohen called progressive desensitization, is not always the safest thing to do. The reason is because while you can tell an adult, okay, I want you to go within four feet of Annabelle, I'm gonna reward her for looking away from you and looking at me, and then the next step is I'm gonna go, okay, I want you to go three and a half feet from Annabelle, and then the reason that this doesn't really work well with children is because children oftentimes have a hard time following direction. You say come within four feet, and they don't know what four feet is, and they come too close and trigger the dog. And so it's always very risky to do behavior modification when it's typical that the child, that a child is the target of the aggressive behavior. The other thing about this is that kids do unexpected things. And so, you know, even if you desensitize the dog to the sight of a child in her yard, predicts good things, and to look away from the child and look at your owner, kids do unpredictable things. And so, you know, a kid can all of a sudden just start screaming, as we know, all right? Kids can do unpredictable things that can trigger a dog that has a past history with animosity towards a child, whether it's because of territorial behavior or whatever. I would also like to ask if anybody knows if the son that the bitten child was playing with also had a mask on, because I would assume if they were following COVID procedures, that both boys would have a mask on, and that would mean that, that the mask on the boy that was known, you know, also, you know, would have caused the dog to be upset about his own, his own person? That I'm not sure about. And then lastly, I'd like to just say that, you know, I think this previously unreported bite absolutely is admissible. I think it's just, this is not a court of law, this, this is a hearing on whether or not this dog is safe to have in this neighborhood the way she is currently being managed. That is our, that is our question. And so a previously unreported bite that, that Animal Control Officer Cohen was able to get information on is absolutely relevant, because now we know that this dog has done the exact same thing to two children, two different levels of bite. I believe that bite was a level three bite because it broke skin as per the mother who treated it. And so we have one level three bite to a child in the exact same situation that we have this, this new bite to a child. So that, so that tells me that children are not safe to go into this yard with Annabelle. It's, and I believe, you know, management fails. You say, well, I'll never let Annabelle out when there's children in the yard. Well, do you, are you gonna know there's always children in the yard? You let Annabelle out, and then a child wanders into the yard or comes to look for their friend. And so for all those reasons, I still feel that the best course of action with this dog is to make sure, and again, whether you're, this, this committee decides whether she is a dangerous dog or not, that is completely up to you, but the very least, this dog needs to be confined behind a fence and not be put on a tether in a neighborhood where there are children who live and play. And again, that level four versus level three, we could probably argue all day. Nobody went there with a ruler, but for me, a dog that inflicts a broken skin bite that reaches the subcutaneous fat and pulls some of that fat out while that bite is coming out would be a level four bite, and I'm sure Mr. Crosby is going to argue with me on that. And so the other thing I just want to state, just because it just, it kind of bugged me a little bit, was the fact that he's, it feels like he, Mr. Crosby, who testifies in fatal dog attacks, is comparing this bite to those cases. And I don't think that's really appropriate or relevant. You know, we need to look at this particular case, this particular bite, and we have to look at this community and this situation where this dog lives, and, and decide what the best course of action is. To say, well, you know, I've seen kids ripped apart and part of their bodies ripped off, so this is nothing compared to that, I don't think is very appropriate or relevant. And so that, that's about all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bolin. Unfortunately, we will not have any interaction back and forth between our two contributing experts, as I do believe that could go on for a couple of days, but we do appreciate your respective contribution. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
At this time, I'll pass it around the rest of the board for any questions for Ms. Bolin, starting with Anita. Anita, I don't see a head shake, gotcha. C.C., any questions from your perspective? Nope, here none, and I don't have any either, thank you again. Attorney Cohen, is there anything that you have for Ms. Bolin?
Thank you, just one or two questions. Ms. Bolin?
Hi.
At the last hearing, I just want to confirm that this is what you said, perhaps not verbatim, but in the same theme, that when, when analyzing these situations, that you, you only look at the bite, that you don't look at the facts that preceded it. Is that, is that what you believe or not?
No.
Okay.
No, I didn't, I don't believe I even said that. You have to look at the whole situation when you're trying to decide whether a dog is declared dangerous, is not safe in, in a certain situation.
Do you recall saying that the motivation of a dog is very irrelevant?
Well, I think you're taking it out of context. Well, I, I think you're taking it out of context. Because what I was saying was the fact that a dog, you were asking me if the dog is, uh, if the dog is being territorial, if it was, um, if that was the dog's motivation, does that play a role? And while sure it plays a role, my point was that the motivation, the territorial behavior, and I just kind of said it in my statement here, that a dog has lots of behavioral options in a situation. And so when a dog, you know, a dog can go through all these different, uh, levels of behavior before they reach a bite. And so my point was in that conversation we had during the first hearing was that the fact that it was a terror, you know, perceived because this child was in her territory wasn't as relevant as the fact that because of the situation, she ended up biting the child. So I, you know, yes, I, it is true that dogs are, can be territorial and it is true. Uh, most dogs are territorial. Most dogs will bite, bark at the mailman. Most dogs will bark at people who knock on the door. Some dog has become aggressive to, to visitors who come into the home. I've been working with these cases for the last 20 years. So my point was not that it's all, that it's irrelevant. It's this, that what matters in this case was the fact that Anna, Annabelle ran towards this child and grabbed that child and bit that child and broke that child's skin. When there were a lot of other, uh, behavioral options she could have had in, in, um, her display of territorialness.
Does she know she has those options or can a trainer teach them her options?
So again, I am, I am a, a behavior consultant that works with, with dogs that show aggressive behavior. I've been doing it for 20 years. I have set families up with behavior modification programs to address every single situation you can think of over the 20 years. And yes, you can work to desensitize a dog to a situation and to do what we call systematic desensitization and counter conditioning to improve the dog's response to the stimuli. The problem in this case, and in any case that involves a child, are the things that I stipulated to earlier, that it's very difficult to put a child in a situation and say, hey, you little boy who got bit by this dog, I want you to come, I want you to stand four feet from her so that I can do this behavior modification. Number one, you're putting a child in a dangerous situation in the sake of training. Uh, number two, you do not know if this child is going to be able to follow directions. And number three, you don't know if this child is going to suddenly panic and, and cause an issue, uh, with the dog. And so, uh, uh, over the, all these years I've been doing this work, when there is a child involved that has been bitten, you know, this kind of systematic desensitization and, and counter conditioning, if, if I, if the parents agree to do it, they have to understand the risks to their children, sorry, their children and other children that might, they might try to incorporate in the training. The thing about this process also is that you have to do what we call stimulus generalization. You can't just have one person, one little boy or two little boys come in and do this work with her. You would have to have 15 little boys come in. You would have to have them do various things. I mean, it is a very complicated, uh, you know, protocol when we're trying to do this. Most people, and again, I've been doing this for 20 years and I have people paying me good money to set up behavior modification programs with them. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of planning. Most people find it very difficult to, to do this, the comprehensive behavior modification program that, that could get a dog to a point where, um, they are less reactive to the stimuli. The other thing is that once a dog reaches that level three, level four bite, then we can never guarantee that dog won't bite again. And so if you, if an owner decides to do behavior modification to try to improve the dog's reaction to the stimuli, they have to understand that it is possible that the dog will bite again because the bite itself told us that that dog has that propensity. And so in this case, now we have two cases of that propensity. And so it just, you know, we can't say, oh, that was a one-off.
So my question, which was far more narrow than that. My, my next question is, are you aware that the investigator on the scene, the person closest to this is unable to determine whether it was a level three or a level four? Hillary Cohen, are you aware that that was her assessment?
Yeah, she said, she thought it was either a level three or a level four. My assessment was it, it appeared based on everything that I thought was a level four.
I just wanted to know if you knew hers. Thank you. I have one last question for you. Is there any difference in your mind, in your vast 20 years of experience? If, if Annabelle had, had leapt out of the, of, out of the window of a car and bit somebody at this level versus Annabelle being on her property? Is there any difference in the behavior in that dog? It, based on if she had leapt out of the window of a car versus being on her property?
Well, again, when she's on her property, there's an element of territorialness to the bite. I, I never said there wasn't. It's just, again, I will repeat that the dog had, you know, there's lots of different things a dog can do when they are being territorial.
Okay. Thank you. Nice to see you. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Cohen. Uh, right ahead, Cece.
Um, if I could, um, I remember during, um, this most recent testimony, I remembered the one question that I had for, um, ACO Cohen, which, um, kind of dovetails with, um, some of the questions that have been going on. And I'm wondering if I can ask her that one question.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
I note that in the report, it's going to come out as two questions. I apologize. I note that in the report, you redid the child's age. Um, I'm assuming in order to protect the identity of the child, um, although the, where they live and their last name is in the report. So, uh, my question is how old is the child or to the nearest? You know, are they younger or at the time of the incident, were they younger than six? Or can you just give me a, basically, you know, are we talking about a child who is, you know, 16 or 15 and big? Or what are we talking about in terms of a child who's been invited back for trigger training?
When I spoke with, um, the parent of the child, uh, on the 20th, 29th, let me just refresh myself here. Yes, on the 29th, um, she stated that the child, while we were speaking on the 29th, was seven years old.
Thank you. Nothing further. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Cece. Uh, with that, we will move on to the public question portion of the hearing. At this time, anybody who is in attendance for the meeting has the opportunity to use the raise hand function to be called upon to share a question or a comment. Uh, given the time parameters, we do ask that you keep these to within a minute to a minute and a half. And we will direct the question to the appropriate resource within everybody who's on the call here tonight to be able to get it answered. Uh, if you are unable to use the raise hand function, if you turn your camera on and wave furiously at your camera, that will do just fine. Uh, but if you do want to use the raise hand function, just click on manage participant, I'm sorry, participants at the bottom, and, uh, you should have the option there on the top. With that, do we have anybody who would like to share a question or a comment? Uh, Mr. Beachkovsky, I see that you had your hand up. You will have a closing testimony portion. Um, but if you have something that you would like answered by a member, then we can do that now. You are still on mute, sir. There you go.
I do have one question, which was, um, Mr. Crosby mentioned that he didn't see the pictures from the incident. Uh, but then Attorney Cohen said he provided the packet. Those pictures were in the packet where the word bunny was in. So I, I was just a little confused about not having access to the pictures from, uh, the pre, pre, pre first surgery, when those were part of the packet, those, this was on the 23rd.
Attorney Cohen, are you able to take that question? Uh, you are still on mute, sir.
Thank you. I have a backup mute just so I don't overstep. Throughout this whole process, uh, since we got Mr. Crosby involved, he's been insisting that I request that I have color photos. So that original packet that was sent, those are black and whites. Uh, so he just didn't feel that, and I guess I'm speaking for him, but he didn't have the color ones, like, uh, he, he now has two color ones, but he found the black and whites not to be helpful.
Thank you, Attorney Cohen. Mr. Beachkovsky, did that answer your question?
Um, so we provided, or color, I'm sorry. We provided color ones and I, I, I know the rest of the, the board had, had access to those. I'm just surprised that the, that the, either the attorney didn't provide them or was unwilling to provide them.
Mr. Cohen, can you acknowledge whether or not you have, um, a color photograph of the injury prior to the surgery?
Yep.
That double backup. I can tell you that, um, anything that was sent to me was sent to Mr. Crosby. Uh, I'm going to ask the board if, take other questions. I'm going to look at the packet I have right now so I can answer your question. Um, or maybe Jim, Jim, do you have the color, any color photos?
Um, all I have seen of, uh, other than the photographs, the color photographs afterwards were some poor quality, black and white scans that were completely un, uh, uninformative. Uh, what I needed to see were, to assess those were the, uh, original digital images, not a, a Xerox or a copy or a scan. And, uh, uh, I haven't received those from, uh, Mr. Cohen or anybody else.
And Mr. Beachkovsky, I believe in some of these email, email trails, uh, because the board sent it to everybody, you were included in my request for the, the, um, the, the digital photos. Uh, did you supply them? Cause if you did, I didn't get them.
They were supplied.
Yeah, they, they definitely were and.
Everything that you were asked, everything that you asked for, including, as Mr. Crosby mentioned, the vet bills, the doctor's report, everything that was discussed and requested in the July 27th hearing was provided to you.
I can show you, I was as recently as last week, still requesting these, the colored photos. Uh, I understand you supplied them. I'm going to look back, but neither of us have seen them.
I'd be happy to share my screen right now.
Yeah, we can, we can show everyone on this call, a picture of the pre-surgery wound, if that's, if that's what needs to happen.
I, I think that the, the value of the pre-surgery was for the assessment by Attorney Cohen's, um, consultant. I, I don't know if they would necessarily have the same value to be shared with the meeting at this time. Uh, but it sounds like, I mean, were these photos that were requested and shared back, uh, Mr. Beachkovsky, were they sent directly to Attorney Cohen? Or were they sent to, uh, the town first and then communicated over? So Blight, were we in receipt of those and sent them over to Attorney Cohen?
That's correct. Um, I'm just looking at my phone to find the actual dates. They were a PDF link or they were an actual link from Mr. Beachkovsky's email. And I'll get you in a second, the actual dates, they went out to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So while Blight is getting those dates, we do have another hand up. We'll go to that one first and then we'll circle back to tie a knot on that question. Mr. Huff, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, you said you were entertaining comments?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Yeah. So just, just because masks on children are going to be part of our inevitable, um, future and because of the, the proximity of the residents to Framing Kennedy, um, I, you know, just to express the public safety concern of there got to be kids around, there got to be kids in masks and hats. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that the board considers that.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Do we have any other questions or comments at this time? If we do, please use the raise hand function. If you are unable to find it, please turn your camera on and give us some visual cue as to your intent.
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's Cece again.
You can go right ahead.
In terms of just timing, um, or procedurally from here out, I know that people are going to have an opportunity for closings and there's going to be musings and such. Whether or not, um, Attorney Cohen, um, will entertain it. I get a sense that he's incredibly forthcoming and willing to answer anything that he can, but I'm by no means suggesting that he has to. I understand his role. Um, but will there be an opportunity, if I have a quick question for Ham, um, during sort of the closing arguments phase?
If he's amenable to that, then I don't see any reason why not.
Okay. Then I'm going to go back on mute for now.
Um, Kevin, so I think that the emails were, two of them were sent by Judith to, um, Attorney Cohen on August, we received them from Mr. Beachkovsky on August 25th. He forwarded them on August 27th and it's a shared file with the doctor's notes. And I think there was, so when we got further requests, I believe we sent that same file again.
So I, I have a, an email with one picture in it, which is, um, the arm sutured, looks sutured, and that's August 27th. So in that email, I see an email from Mr. Beachkovsky to Judith. Just making sure I'm not on mute, um, that says, I sent Judith, I send an email with a link to the doctor's notes. Please let me know if you can get them to them. There are 31 megabytes, so I, uh, I can't send them as attachment. I have however attached a picture of the wound site from today, about 70 days after the attack. So that was forwarded to me. There's no, there's no link in, in my email chain after, and I forwarded that to Mr. Crosby, same day in my email chain. I don't have any link that was sent. I don't have a link.
I, I don't know what to tell you. We've sent whatever we received multiple times to everybody. And, and all the medical records that we mostly recently received are in tonight's packet. If Mr. Beachkovsky has, has pictures he wants to put up on the screen at this point, maybe that could be helpful, but, um, there's absolutely nothing the town has that we have not already shared with everyone.
I'll reiterate my position that the pictures themselves really only hold value to the assessment from the consultants on the call. And the assessment of the consultant, as much as I would love to get as complete a picture as possible to be able to move forward into deliberation, uh, the prospect of asking our consultants to look at a shared screen to make additional contributions to what they've already provided, isn't very appealing. Now, i- i- if our consultants feel that there is inherent value to doing that, then I'm, I'm very much open to doing it. But I, I just don't see how that would change most of what we've heard up until this point. Um, so Mr. Crosby and Ms. Bowlin, please, uh, share your thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, for me, um, it would have been nice to have had them before. Um, they might be somewhat informative, uh, for instance, to show just how close to the surface of the skin within a millimeter or so the subcutaneous fat is so that, uh, the, the other, the members of the board could see that it does not take, uh, digging as, as anyone who'd ever, you know, been around medical procedures or autopsies and so forth would be able to easily tell you that, uh, we're only talking a millimeter or two, not four centimeters. Um, it would be interesting to see, but I'm not sure we, we absolutely need to, especially as this is going quite late for the committee and, uh, but I'll be glad to acquiesce to, uh, your opinion or decision, however it might be.
Well, clearly, sir, you're not accustomed to our meetings. This is just halftime for us. Ms. Bowlin, your thoughts?
I mean, I'm fine not seeing the, I, I saw the black and white pictures and although the color ones would have been fine, I did see the black and white ones. I don't need to see the color ones at this point.
Thank you very much. And so then from my position, I, I would say that the, the pictures are more of a procedural concern. We appreciate the Beachkovskis submitting them as they did. Uh, we appreciate the town office taking them and forwarding them onto Attorney Cohen. Uh, clearly there was a break in the communication line there, uh, which we can dig into. But I do believe that the request was satisfied, at least from the Beachkovsky standpoint. So thank you very much for that. Uh, moving on from that question, I will open it up once more for any more questions or comments from the public. Uh, once again, please use the raise hand function or take yourself onto video and visually identify that you'd like to share. I am seeing no other. I am seeing no other indications of comments and therefore I will move forward into our closing remarks. First up are the Bechukowskis, please go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad that town has taken so many hours to thoughtfully deliberate on this decision because it's a serious decision. One, one thing that is consistent in my mind is the, even the doctor's report that talks about the size of the wound. This is, this is not a normal single puncture wound. It is, as it said in the report, four centimeters long tear, a centimeter wide. It was, it was not that you could just see the subcutaneous fat. It was, it was fully out of the wound and, and there was a, there was a significant hole there. So I, I know we've, we've had some debate on was it a quarter inch deep or not? I, I know what a quarter inch is and I'm fairly certain we hit that threshold. This is not about, you know, just a, a small incident. This is, this is something that was a significant event that is part of a pattern of folks who have been invited to that yard to play and this has happened. That's, that is, that is the reason why I requested a dangerous dog hearing. I know by mass general law, that's the only way to really deal with this, is to request a dangerous dog hearing and to prevent another incident from happening. That's what I felt I, I needed to do. The, the, the mass general law talks about specific things and it's always been referenced that what happened was not just barking or growling and that the reaction was not grossly disproportionate to a listed number of, of events. None of those events happened. No one has ever said the dog was protecting themselves or their owners from an attack or an assault. That was not the case. No one is saying that the, the, the dog is being threatened or someone was committing a crime during the course of the, of the attack. No one was provoking the dog. In fact, the son was walking away from the dog when it happened. Or that someone was illegally or unauthorized within the premises of the enclosure, which is not the case. So it's been made reference that the mass general law has those stipulations. I just want to point out that those stipulations are not that the dog perceived something to happen, but that was, that those things were actually happening. And none of those things were happening that would be disqualifying of a dangerous dog determination. That's, everything else I think has been said and probably been said multiple times. This is, this is something that I just don't want another family to have to go through. And I'm also glad I'm not in your position because the determination of how, how best to protect the, the community is your responsibility and it's just my responsibility to ask you to take a look at it. So thank you for, for doing your service and, and looking into it and coming to a determination. Sorry, do you have anything you want to add? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Bechukowski. At this time, we'll move on to the closing remarks from the dog owner, Melissa Mitchell. Attorney Cohen, I know that you prefer a Q and A kind of lead format, but it would be our preference if, if it would be delivered by Ms. Mitchell in its entirety, much like the Bechukowskis were. And then if there's anything that you'd like her to add, you're more, you're more than welcome to do that at the conclusion.
Well, actually, in communicating with her, this whole, and if she wants to speak, she can, but I don't think she wants to. She's, she's quite upset. Without going deeper, I, I don't know that she's in a position right now after some of the things she's heard, at least about what is alleged about her dog's behavior, to speak. And we weren't prepared for her to, but let me just see if, if I may have one second to see if she wants to speak or not.
Obviously, either way is perfectly fine.
Or we can do it this way. Let me make sure she's still on. There was a point where I told her, no, she's still on. So Melissa, if you want to speak, just unmute yourself now and, and, well, here's why she, she doesn't want to speak in looking at it. Because honestly, I mean, you guys do have a tough job to do, but I have to say that some of the questions that have come up to me, and this is her perception too, which is why she doesn't want to undergo this, another cross-examination here. Some of the questions from the elected officials or official who's here to be unbiased, they, they've been, in our opinion, agenda-filled questions from somebody who's not town council, doesn't represent the Bechukowskis and doesn't represent Hillary Cohen. And I, I feel that exposing her to, to questions from the board, I mean, the irrelevancy of some of the questions to discredit an expert, this is not the applicable form for it. I know it's fun, but it's not applicable. I'm concerned that she's going to undergo the same-
Mr. Cohen, very quickly, let me just interject for one moment. These are closing statements. The intent was not to have a Q and A period be included after. We did identify that select board member Van Tyne had requested that she be able to ask you individually one question during this period, but there was no intent for a Q and A period following closing statements.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
So knowing that, Melissa, just let me know, knowing that there's not going to be a Q and A and you're free to talk, let me know if that's something you want to do, either by unmuting and if you don't want to do it, that's fine too. Okay, I'll just make some brief closing. You've heard plenty from me. Thank you for all the time you have put in. I mean, my job here is, is really to make sure that the, the right answer is arrived at the right way. And I mean, that's, that's for you to figure out the, the right answer. In terms of the right way, I think we've, the right way involves comparing the facts to the law. And this law specifically that I've cited before, it has a carve vote specifically for these instances so that dogs are not mislabeled. And here, despite someone, other opinions, we have proven that this dog was protecting its resources and protecting its property and possibly the people outside and in there. From the dog's perspective, which is what 14157, it requires you as a fact finder to figure out what the dog's perspective was. Was this dog perceiving a provocation, a threat? It doesn't matter that the victim isn't actually a threat. In the dog's mind, it sees somebody on the property who doesn't belong there. It's a threat. So we wouldn't, as humans, we wouldn't see them as threats, but dogs see, see these, specifically, the law carves out times when dogs see these threats, when they're specifically on their property and protecting. If this happened in a dog park or a public playground, it's a completely different set of laws that would apply. Here, the remedies that are already in place that we've mentioned, shorten the run, muzzle off property, only out there with the presence of an adult, and if there's any kids out there, the dog is in the house, those are things that are going to prevent this from happening again. And those are things that we believe under a nuisance order, the board is authorized to do. So we can't, we, we can't mistake the quantity over quality in terms of the bites. And again, the facts are, these have been single engagement bites that, and we can't deal with the what ifs. Well, what if she wasn't restrained or what if she wasn't on the runner? What ifs are not for, for, for these hearings to decide the fate of a dog. What is, is that we've shown and the facts show this happened on the dog's property. And I think it's, this is why 14157 was written. And you know, the task you have to do to protect the community while also operating within the law is difficult, but I think here it's not because the legislature is telling you what to do. And if you had any doubt, our expert explained some theories as to what was happening in the dog's mind. And either way, she's, my client's already put these voluntary remedies in place. So thank you for the two nights of hearing. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to listen to them.
Thank you, Attorney Cohen, and thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I know that Cece had requested an inquiry for Attorney Cohen at the conclusion of the closing statement. Cece, would you like to go right ahead?
All right, am I off? I'm off mute. So my question, and feel free not to answer it, like I said, I completely understand and respect your role. But my question, and it may not be fair, but when I look at the statements that were made on the first night on July 27th, or whatever the date was, I'm reminded that I had asked your client what she knew about 96 Boardman, which I'd also asked of Hillary Cohen, and I think I, whatever, I pinged on it and became very interested in it and then asked everybody about it. And both ACO Cohen and your client indicated that they didn't have any information. And if I'm not mistaken, this statement was that, that she, I don't want to misquote it, just, you know, I'll hear about it, I'll get letters. I said, what, what could she tell us about or tell me about the incident? And she indicated she quote, "Does not know anything about this." So I'm mindful of the fact that perhaps at that time, there was a sense that, that her dog was in jeopardy on death's row. And so perhaps that weighed into that, the decision there. But when I read now the July 29 incident report, understanding all of the prescriptions and procedural issues, what it tells me is that the person at home during the incident with the five-year-old was your client, that in fact, she's the one who carried the child home and is subsequently was texting with her neighbor, which it, and, and I get it, right? It's subsequent report, perhaps, you know, two years have gone by, you may not remember everything exactly, but it sure does sort of intimate and knowledge that one would have expected she would have had when she was making her statement under oath in July. And I'm just wondering if you could shed any light on that? And if you're not willing to, I completely understand, but just as to why that sort of disconnect, it just seems like sort of contra, I don't know, I'm blanking on the word, but that's my question.
Okay. And my response is this, regardless of how she answered that question, doesn't decide whether this dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog.
Fair enough.
She might be, we're talking about the dog, not the person.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you for asking.
Yep. And now I'm going to mute myself again. I'm going to try.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have concluded all testimony and question and answer periods. So with that, it would be up to the board to close the public hearing so that we may enter deliberation for the purpose of providing direction on a decision. So Peter, Peter Mello, unless you have any objection at this point, we'll close the public hearing, is that correct?
Sure. Sounds good.
Thank you. So as Chair, I move that we close the public hearing to determine whether a dog owned by Ms. Melissa Mitchell is a nuisance or a dangerous dog. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? I am seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Cece Van Tyne, aye.
Uh-oh, we might have lost Anita at a very inopportune time. Anita, I think we got you back. Could you please vote once more?
Yeah, sorry, I, I froze for a second there. I'm in favor, aye.
Very good. It is unanimous vote. The public hearing is now closed and the board can move into deliberation. I know that there was some speculation as to if the board should deliberate and come up with a decision this evening, with the potential of the late night with our other business that needs to be attended to. From my perspective, this hearing and this discussion has been ongoing for nearly six weeks at this point. I think it would be my inclination to discuss and come up with a determination this evening, but I will toss it to the rest of the board for their feelings first, starting with Anita.
I think we could decide this evening.
Thank you. Cece, your thoughts?
I agree that I think that, that we could decide this evening, even if it runs late, we are, we're kind of all here. The only thing, request, the only prayer for relief that I would make of, of the Chair would be that at some point, either deliberations might take a long time, but at some point, there is a brief restroom break because I've been drinking a lot of iced tea.
Well, I feel that at this point, it, we are at a good breaking point right now before we enter deliberation. So I'm more than happy to offer a five-minute recess at this time and we'll group back up at 9:56 to continue with the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I had 9:56. I believe we have, at the very least, our board back, can everybody hear me? Yes, I'm seeing some shaking heads, thank you so much. All right, so as we move into deliberations, at this point, the board will discuss the potential outcomes and orders that are before us as they pertain to this dangerous dog hearing. Perhaps it would be helpful at this time, if Attorney Mellow, if you wouldn't mind just taking us through the decision points that the board has from this point forward?
Sure, Chair Calcutt, so I, this is outlined in, in some materials that were distributed in connection with the meeting. Basically, the board has two determinations to make first. The, and this is all laid out in pretty copious detail in Section 157 of Chapter 140. The first determination, insofar as this is a dangerous dog hearing, is whether to dismiss the complaint or to deem the dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. And depending on the outcome of that vote, the statute requires that the board proceed with, with a vote as to the appropriate remedy if the board, you know, deems the dog, in the first instance, a nuisance or a dangerous dog. This has been pointed out by several different parties and presenters throughout the course of the hearing. The statute forecloses a dangerous dog determination under certain conditions, and that's laid out in the, near the beginning of the statute. And that, that's something that was identified in the, on the document that was distributed to the board. Separately, there's also, I think the board should also be mindful of the fact that general law, Chapter 140, Section 136A, contains definitions of the terms attack, dangerous dog, and nuisance dog. And, you know, happy to go through, and I think I read verbatim a couple of those definitions, if not all those definitions, at the first session of the hearing. So the first, the first vote would be on whether to deem a dog, whether to dismiss the complaint or instead deem the dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. And I think that in terms of, you know, how to go about undertaking that vote, I think the board should look at, first of all, the definitions of those terms in Section 136A, and then reviewing the criteria under which a dangerous dog determination is foreclosed in Section 157. And, you know, determining, after considering those definitions and those criteria, determining whether to dismiss the complaint or deem the dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog.
Thank you, Peter. One question that I had was, as it pertains to the designation, obviously, there are a set of orders that are associated to a dangerous dog designation. But I do not recall seeing a set of orders that are available or assigned to a nuisance dog designation. And as part of Attorney Cohen's closing, he had identified that there were certain orders, for lack of a better term, or actions that could be associated to a nuisance dog designation that his client would be amenable to or have already accommodated for. Can you talk me through a little bit about the process of associating dangerous dog-esque act orders to a nuisance dog designation?
Yeah, so statute's a little, you know, or less than explicit, I guess, about, well, let's put it this way, the statute doesn't outline in as copious detail what sorts of remedies are available if the board determines that the dog's a nuisance dog as opposed to a dangerous dog. Just says, if the hearing authority deems a dog a nuisance dog, the hearing authority may further order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. So I think there's some latitude and some discretion, you know, to make reasonable determinations about, you know, remedies. It's, it's a little unclear that the statute is, and there's not a ton of case law on this question or the distinction, but, you know, I think that the more, and maybe this is an appropriate question to debate, once the determination's been made in the first instance about whether the dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, or whether to dismiss the complaint. But I guess in my view, you know, to the extent that the remedies outlined in Section 157 that apply with respect to a dangerousness determination, just as a matter of, I guess, you know, statutory construction, if the, the remedies that would be available in the event of a nuisance determination, you know, probably are outside of the remedies that are enumerated when a board, or that are available when a board is deemed a dog, a dangerous dog. So Chair, you're on mute.
I had to get one in tonight, right? There we go, got it out of the way. At this point, I'd like to kind of tag in the rest of the board, get their feelings, thoughts on a high level before we move into the first decision point, which is if we were to dismiss the complaint or pursue a nuisance or dangerous dog designation. We'll start with Anita, since you're off mute already.
Absolutely, so I, I think what you're asking me is kind of to talk about my thinking about that designation. And so one of the things that I'm kind of thinking about is I look at the law and as I consider the circumstance, like we have a circumstance that we have a dog that's bit two children in our town, right? And that, in my mind, law aside, feels dangerous. But you look at the law, and there was a lot of conversation back and forth about different things, but they didn't write the law to say that anytime a dog bites somebody on their own property, it's okay because they're defending, right? They didn't indicate where the dog was. And so I think the way it's written, it's asking us to infer some things about the dog's choices. And I think that it seems fairly clear to me that the dog wasn't being attacked or picked on or harassed in any way, there was no criminal activity. The boy was, had been there before, had been invited on the property. And so it seems to me that the criteria that would, that would eliminate it from being a dangerous situation don't apply here. And so to me, I'm leaning toward thinking that this is a dangerous dog and that we should, that's where it makes sense in my mind.
Thank you, Anita. Cece, your thoughts?
So in the first instance, and I'll talk more in a, in a moment when we get sort of into the weeds, but in the first instance, in terms of the question of dismiss or dangerous or nuisance, where in the first question presented is, is, should it be dismissal? Where, where I want to, when I look at the rules, I see and hear what Attorney Cohen, odd feminine attacks notwithstanding, is saying about nuisance. And I, and I can see that, and I can see the flip side with, with dangerous, but I really struggle, I don't see dismissal, right? Because the statute is, to Anita's point, pretty clear where it went, and it carves out the following circumstances, where they're going to give them a bye, right? So defending or protecting itself, its offspring, or a person from attack or assault. Was there a crime being committed? The person attacked or threatened by the dog, was engaged in teasing, tormenting, provoking? The person that was attacked had breached an enclosure. And I know there was some sort of mental or verbal gymnastics that sort of attached to the idea that being on a tether was akin to an enclosure. But words mean what words mean, and it doesn't say restrained, it says an enclosure. So I don't think that applies. And especially where they then go on to indicate that the gated fenced-in area, if the gate was closed, locked or unlocked, right? So I don't, I don't see anything that says to me that the incident, even if we take just the incident regarding the child who was bitten in 2020, I don't see where we get a dismissal, especially, again, in addition to sort of, sort of third-party observers who kind of weighed in on the idea of the tether being an enclosure and the child was in it masked and sort of all of that. I've also heard a fair amount about how this would have felt from the dog's perspective, and I certainly appreciate that. But again, I don't see the words or, you know, any sort of a play on those words within this for this type of situation. There are, you know, if the dog feels threatened, obviously, that's from his perspective, right? But again, I think it would be, we don't have those facts. So while I still want to mull that nuisance be dangerous, I don't, I don't see dismissal.
Thank you, Cece, and I'm not going to belabor the point anymore. I have an agreement that dismissal does not seem like a viable action to move forward with. So that leaves us with the decision point of a designation of a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. I think that we heard from Anita that her leaning at this point is to, towards a dangerous dog, and she had cited the reasons why. But Cece, to piggyback onto your preview that you provided of balancing between the two, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I didn't even take myself, I didn't even put myself back on mute. So again, I'm mindful of the fact that, that she was on her property, at least adds to the two incidences that relate to people. And, and I sort of view the dog, rightly or wrongly, I kind of view the dog bite as different, both obviously because it's a dog and not a person, but also in terms of the facts behind it and, and the reading of the veterinary report. I'm kind of more focused, my focus is on, on the people. And if I look at the child of the incident in 2020, I understand again, that the idea is that, you know, she gets let out and the first thing she sees is someone in a mask, and perhaps that is alarming to her. But I'm also mindful of the fact that she went straight to, at least from, from what I've heard, she went straight to bite, like she didn't pass go, she didn't collect $200, she went right to bite. And again, while the owner's expert, who was quite informative and very interesting and had a lot of interesting things to say, did okine that the, it was sort of a grab and release to the other expert's point. The, that could have been partly because the child was at whatever speed, albeit people were pretty clear, not at a run, was leaving. And not because he was seated or in some other way stationary, and she bit once, realized what she had done, thought better of it and released, or however, whatever anthropomorphizing I would, I would do. So what is, with nuisance, what do, I have some more thoughts, but I'm going to ask Peter, if you can run through for me again, I know you just did it, but I was more, I was sort of hearing in my head for dismissal versus nuisance versus dangerous, and now I'm down to nuisance versus dangerous. And I'd love for you to just, can you tell me again? I see, I have, is it, if it's in my packet, I can read it myself, I know how to do that. But what I see in my packet is, I see the CMR, I see rabies protocol, I see a picture of the dog who is, I'm sure there's better pictures, it's just tough to see her in this picture, but she's, for, for anybody scoring at home, this is not a, this is not a, somebody's Yorkie or some, it looks like a, she's, granted, she's doing the doggy sprawl, but she looks like a good-sized dog. Where is the stuff that I can find that sort of gives me the elements on nuisance? I have 141, I mean, yeah, 140, 157, is it in there or is it, I only see the dangerous, where's the element?
So the definition of nuisance is set forth, or definition of nuisance dog is set forth in Section 136A. And I can read you the definition, it's, nuisance dog is a dog that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in a vicinity, or two, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or, or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. That's the definition for nuisance dog.
So that's, that's, that's it right there then, right? That's the question presented, is what the Annabelle did on each of these occasions grossly disproportionate to her perceived reality, or to the reality, I guess, her perceived reality? Obviously, it wouldn't be if you were to ask her, but that's the issue. And that, I guess, explains why if you cycle back to Chapter 140, Section 157, a little three, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following. So then she's protected, so is it grossly disproportionate? And so now the question, I guess, is whether or not I think, just quickly muse upon evidence if I can, whether or not I think that, even in a vacuum, if we just look at the 2020 incident, whether I think that this, a child sitting, playing, standing, whatever they were doing, playing with their friend at their friend's house would explain away or invite this level of a bite. I know that there is a dispute regarding the levels between the experts. I think they both seem incredibly learned, these experts do. It was interesting to see they both came from out of state. I know that was somewhat of an issue at the beginning. But they both certainly are erudite, how do I, how do I feel about what each of them sort of imparted in terms of information? One is suggesting that the bite wasn't, was, was minor or not a level four, and sort of explaining that the situation was such that it would be not grossly disproportionate to the stimuli, right? That it would be expected that a child might get bitten and that the dog no longer, does not pose a danger. And I guess that's somewhat concerning to me, that idea that a dog doesn't pose a danger when presented with being let out on a, on a run with a child who is lawfully on the premises, not engaged in teasing or any of the kind of things that we would think of a kid doing that would, you'd sort of think, well, you know, you probably shouldn't have done X or Y, and then the dog wouldn't have bit you. Certainly, that's not the case here, in my opinion. I know that in terms of sort of weighing the evidence on both sides, you've got an owner who clearly loves their dog, she's a cute dog, they love her. I know that there's some suggestion that perhaps any decision that perhaps any decision that's made tonight is made because of an agenda. And I only, well, I only know that because I heard it heard it in arguments tonight. And I can only assume as the most loquacious person of the bunch, pretty much on any given night, that I might have been where that focus was. I can't, I can only say and for whatever it's worth, that if I have an agenda, it's just to make sure that the people of Norfolk, that's my job, that's what I, as they say, I was elected to do, that the people of Norfolk are safe, that the children are safe. Not that, I don't know what other agenda there could be. But that's neither here nor there. My agenda is to weigh the fact that I like the doggos with the fact that my job here is to weigh the evidence and assign it weight and determine what to do. So on the one hand, I have a person who loves their dog who has under oath, gone on the record and made statements that we learned tonight were false. However understandable that is, the deflection that this is about whether the dog is safe or not, not whether or not she, the dog owner made misrepresentations whilst under oath, but, and I guess that's right. Like I said, you're, you're protecting your dog, but if you're willing to say some things under oath that are later determined to be false, doesn't that perhaps suggest that maybe there are other things that are not necessarily to be given as much weight? And I guess that's where I get stuck, that this, putting that to the side for the second, if I assume that the parent of the child who was bitten in 2018 didn't make it up, and I can't imagine why she would because she's being sort of exonerated within the, the body of these reports and on this hearing for having not reported and not treated in the way that people would have liked, I cannot imagine if she could, had the opportunity to say, nope, nothing happened, she wouldn't have seized on it. So from that perspective, I think that she it's true, to the best of her recollection, it's two years old. And if I read that, that means that the owner knew that the other bite happened, which tells me that the owner could have given that information to her expert because we learned tonight that they had been meeting before the last dangerousness hearing. And if she didn't, why not? Why wouldn't you tell your expert, hey, he's bitten more than one dog? And I can only think of one reason, and that would be because maybe you don't want a dangerousness finding. And again, no judgment, but it does impact my view of the weight of her testimony and also quite candidly, the weight of the expert, because the expert rather than indicating that, yes, in fact, the owner of the dog told him that her child had bitten another child and that she had had to carry that five year old home because of, I don't know why actually, it just says she carried him home, but she, and that the child had been bitten on both butt cheeks and that she had later reached out to the mother about the child. If she had told the expert that, would it have changed anything? It might have, not have, right? He did say that depending on the level of the bite, it might not have changed at all, but I don't know that now because that wasn't in the evidence. All that's in evidence is that there was a misrepresentation that seems somewhat material. And now I have to decide whether or not that evidence, it has more value to me than the evidence on the other side, which is another well regarded expert. And the child who was bitten in 2020 through his parents. And I again, go to the medical records and the statements that the bites were deep and were traumatic and devastating. And again, I'm mindful of the fact that we're not supposed to just decide it based upon one bite, but in a way, the way the ranking goes, it kind of is somewhat of an indicia. But I would say that it's my sense that I, I just, all things being equal, if the only issue presented is whether or not the attack was grossly disproportionate to the stimuli, I just don't see how the attack isn't grossly disproportionate to the stimuli. I just, I, especially and somebody, I just, I don't know, I'm struggling, I'm struggling with it a little bit, Mr. Chair, because I, I want to do the right thing and there's a bunch of people on all sides of this who feel very, very badly. I heard it in the owner's voice the last time about the, you know, breakdown in friendships and just all sorts of stuff. But especially where I now see that there was I don't know, I just don't see, even if I assume it's just the 2020 incident, even if that's it. And so just looking at it from that perspective, if I assume that the other one shouldn't be mentioned because the it wasn't reported. And so I only have the 2020 incident. And I still don't see how a child doing what this child was doing could in any way invite this level of an attack that he's going to be scarred with for life. So I guess that my perspective is that I guess it would have to be a dangerous.
Thank you, Cece. At this point, I would, I mean, Cece did a great job of recapping all of the evidence, testimony and everything that was provided to the board to be able to make the best decision possible. And I know many have touched on it before as we've gone through this process, but clearly none of us are doctors, behavioralists, animal control officers, public safety officials in any way, shape or form. So we're sitting kind of on the fence here and taking this all in from all sides so we can make the best decision, as Cece had noted, for the safety of the community and in the best interest of the resident, Ms. Mitchell and her dog. I myself, you know, we have two rescue dogs and I wholly understand the amount of work that goes into acclimating rescue dogs into your home. There is a range of mentalities and temperaments out there that require an even larger range of resources and time to be able to appropriately and responsibly acclimate a dog to a new home. Clearly, Ms. Mitchell is very emotionally tied to her dog and cares about it very much. You can hear that in her voice when she gave her testimony in our first hearing. And I don't think anybody would ever question that. But there was one term that was used during all the testimony that we heard that really stuck with me. And that was the management of the situations. I believe it was Ms. Bolin who had identified that, you know, we can sit here all day and talk about intent or triggers or things of that nature. But none of that's really going to matter when we talk about how individual situations are managed and what we're doing to prevent the greatest amount of risk in those situations. So while I'm, I'm happy to hear that there are certain actions that have been taken to ensure that certain situations like this don't happen again. When is the next time that Ms. Mitchell isn't going to be there and somebody else is going to accidentally let the dog out or accidentally allow the kids to go in the backyard or just another accident that doesn't necessarily have any kind of backing or ramification associated to them? The second thing that really sticks out is as Cece had mentioned, and as Attorney Mello had mentioned, the term grossly disproportionate. We see that in both designations of nuisance and in dangerous dog definitions. Obviously, that is a very vague term because that leaves it up to us to determine what is grossly disproportionate. If you were to ask me after hearing everything we've heard for, I know so many hours, if this fits into grossly disproportionate in terms of the 2020 incident, I would say no, I don't believe that it is grossly disproportionate. I believe that it is disproportionate, but I don't believe that it is so off the wall, out of the realm of possibility that it easily fits into one of the two designations. And that's what I'm struggling with right now. But as I do that, I wonder what is the difference between these two designations? If we have the ability to designate the dog as a nuisance dog, but still put forth the remedial actions that we want them to take that could be included within a dangerous dog designation, does that still get us to the endpoint that we need to get to? Is there something else associated to a dangerous dog designation that is not listed here? That would be a cause for concern for the owner. And Attorney Mello, I'll toss this over to you if you have any insight, but aside from the more serious remedial actions that one can take and then obviously much more serious case, what are the other ramifications of the difference between the two designations?
Yeah, no, you're hitting on, I think, an important question and one that unfortunately the legislation doesn't doesn't do, it doesn't address in detail. What, what I will say, Kevin, is that you know, in terms of the statutory construction principle that I mentioned earlier, you know, looking at the statute, what it says is that if, if, as I mentioned, if the hearing authority deems a dog a nuisance dog, the hearing authority may further order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. Then separately, it says if the hearing authority deems a dog a dangerous dog, the hearing authority shall, I think the word shall, I just underscore for emphasis because I think it's, it's you know, noteworthy in the context of this statutory construction discussion, shall order one or more of the following. And then it enumerates a series of different remedies and, you know, everything from humane restraint to euthanasia. And, you know, various other types of remedies in between. I don't think that, you know, and again, this isn't something that, to my knowledge, has been the subject of explicit, you know, reported case law. I think that you don't need to read that to suggest that those enumerated remedies aren't available when the dog's merely been deemed a nuisance dog. I think that, you know, there's more, probably more latitude. Now, do I think that, you know, euthanasia is available if the dog's just deemed a nuisance dog? No, I don't. But as part of an order you know, that accompanies a nuisance determination, could some form of humane restraint be, you know, implemented? I think the board probably has discretion to do that. I, you know, clearly under the statute, if there's a determination or the board deems the dog a dangerous dog, then it must, because the word shall can, oh, it's a mandatory obligation, it must order one or more of the enumerated remedies. That, that doesn't necessarily suggest that you know, that some of the enumerated remedies wouldn't be available if the board just deems the dog a nuisance dog, that they don't, you know, have the latitude to adopt some, you know, combination of, of those remedies. So you know, it's not, it's not something that's, it's not a distinction that's been, you know, the subject of, of a lot of, well, much case law at all. And it's, and the legislation is relatively new. You know, and perhaps that's part of it, maybe this, this distinction will be further fleshed out in, in case law in the future, but but I, again, I don't think that the board could, you know, could order euthanasia if it just merely deems the dog a nuisance dog as opposed to a dangerous dog, but I do think that there's some latitude in terms of what types of relief the board could order to accompany a nuisance determination.
Thanks, Peter. So I think this from my perspective then, you know, the important things in terms of remedial action would be the enclosure suggestion that Ms. Bolin had suggested. I don't believe that the runner is necessarily the best route to go in Annabelle's case. So I, I agree that an enclosure of some kind would be one of the actions that I would like added. It looks like they're already amenable to muzzles went out, that's another one. If the enclosure is there, I think that we alleviate the concern about having the kids be there at the same time. And, you know, the other one that I had noted was a proof of insurance in case of any future incidents. From my perspective, if we were to implement those three orders, those would be a wide range of protections in place to be able to ensure that we don't have instances like this in the future. And at that point, I don't know if having those be orders under a nuisance dog or orders under a dangerous dog has any bearing. Unless we feel that those orders are not necessarily associated to a nuisance dog. I know those are three of the five or so available orders in a dangerous dog designation. And it could be outside of the scope for us to designate the dog as nuisance and then associate those orders. But from my perspective, those are the three remedial orders that were important to me to determine and consider as we move forward. So at this time, I'll toss it to the other members of the board for their thoughts and feedback, starting with Cece.
I almost went on and off. So my question is that from a, from a the remedial action standpoint, the things that I had that I wanted to see would have been or are an enclosure like has been mentioned before, which would be not a small, not a run and not a small pen. Because the issue with the small pen, in my mind, especially having listened to the experts, is getting Annabelle from point A to point B without incident, right? You're going to have nine days that are great, 10th day, you're going to have an issue. And so to be able to open the back door, have her be able to go out and in, without anyone else being able to access that back space, obviously that seemed to be something that was important. That was one of the things that I wanted to see. None of these are euthanasia, by the way, which I thought that people knew, but apparently they did not. But muzzle, the humane muzzle, again, if they're willing to do that, 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 that's fine again, because that sort of addresses when you're out in a bout in case somebody drops the leash or whatever. And then the third one, to your point as well, is, is the insurance piece because in the event that you have additional future management issues, because again, I'm mindful of the fact that management is not an element of the dangerousness dog. If it was, it would be a no brainer. This dog has already been managed twice into a child's leg. That doesn't seem like great odds. I would want the enclosure, I would want the muzzle and I would want insurance in the event, God forbid, it happened again, that there was some protection. I don't know what is the difference? Like why, if you editorial only want to make sure that the dog, that the community is protected from the dog to whoever that person who spoke's point, they live near an elementary school during a pandemic. So to sort of dismiss and say, wow, it was masked or this or that, that's a problem right now. We want to protect the community. What is the difference if we're asking for the same, this for you, Peter, if I'm asking for the same thing, if we say it's a nuisance dog versus a dangerous dog, obviously there's some reason, right? That it is better for the owner that the dog be a nuisance or they wouldn't have pitched it in part of the the, the sort of fiery speech against agenda riddled town government workers. But what's the difference? Like if all I want is to make sure that there's insurance in case they mess up again and God forbid, and that in the, how we prevent messing up is what we keep her in an enclosure, like, like an actual legit fence, not any, I went to Home Depot, but like actual, if we do those things, what's the difference? Why is there like an insurance carrier different? Like why would you not want dangerous versus nuisance? Is it not as enforceable? Is it just a stigma? Why do I care if I'm getting the same result? I mean, I don't know that I necessarily agree that it's disproportionate, but not grossly, but by the same token, I hear what he's saying and I can, if I get what I think is going to protect the community, I, I, I'm, I'm happy. So what is the difference, Mr. Mello?
Well, in terms of why you would care as a property owner, I think there may be insurance impacts. I'm, I don't I don't know that what the impact would be in a specific instance, but I would, I would imagine that whether one's dog has been determined to be a dangerous dog might impact an insurance carrier's review of a policy. With respect to the statute, again, it, it's, it, it, in a, I guess, a less than clear fashion parses out this distinction and says, you know, if you, if you designate the dog or deem the dog a nuisance, then, you know, you have, you have the authority to require then, you know, you have, you have the authority to require the owner to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance. And I read the exact text verbatim. But if you deem the dog a dangerous dog, you have to order one of, one or a combination of, of these remedies. So what does that mean? Does that mean that, you know, that those, those enumerated remedies are only available when the dog's been deemed a dangerous dog? I don't think that's the case. I think that what the statute says is that when you deem the dog a dangerous dog, you have to order one, one or more of those remedies. Doesn't necessarily foreclose you from, you know, ordering one of those remedies if the dog's been determined to be a nuisance as opposed to a dangerous dog.
So can you, so if you could answer me this next question, because as I said, again, if I, those would be the results that I would think from my, from my viewing of all of the evidence. I feel like the reaction, the dog bites were grossly disproportionate, but only to the degree that you have a well-loved pet who, from every other, although apparently someone you don't want around children or bicycles, but if you come up with these protections, where's the downside? And then I wonder, is the downside, if I have a nuisance and I then move to another town, does that designation, not the designation, but if I have a nuisance dog, if one of my dogs is a nuisance, and they are, but not in this, this way, if I have a dog that is determined by the town to be a nuisance, and the town puts strictures in place, for example, that I need to have the fence, that I need to safely and humanely muzzle, and that I need to carry X amount of insurance, no matter the cost. And then I go, I wheels up and move three towns away, the, I'm imagining that the order of the Board of Selectmen for Norfolk isn't worth the paper it's written on in Medway or Norwood. Is, if I have a dangerous dog designation with the exact same strictures, again, so we're clear, that's what I was thinking about. If I then, as it have a dangerousness, a danger dog, God, we're still not even halfway done with this meeting, and I then decide to move to Norwood, does the dangerousness, dangerous dog designation follow inclusive of the restrictions? That would be my issue.
Right. So what the statute says, I'm just reading, this is subsection I of the, section 157, it says, orders issued by a hearing authority shall be valid throughout the Commonwealth unless overturned under subsections D or F. So, I think that, that probably answers your question. I think that, again, I'm not aware of a specific instance in which a hearing authority has imposed an order with respect to a dog that's then moved to a different community. It's an interesting question. I think the statute, I think that excerpt that I just read from the statute intends to, to, to suggest or to require that an order imposed with respect to a dog is, is effective and binding throughout the Commonwealth.
Even if it's a nuisance? Because that would be my only, you know.
Right, because, well, an order, an order issued under that section would include an order to deem the dog a nuisance dog. Now, if the, if the board, you know, if, if the board wants to, wants advice about the range of potential remedies available with respect to, or when it makes a determination that the dog is a nuisance as opposed to a dangerous dog, I'm happy to look into that and provide the board with, with advice with respect to that issue. I guess, as I sit here, just feeling the question, you know, and, and opining extemporaneously, I would say that because of the way the statute is set up, the fact that those, those remedies are enumerated as required orders when the dog's been deemed dangerous, doesn't necessarily foreclose that one or some combination of those remedies can't be imposed when the dog's been merely deemed a nuisance dog. But again, you know, some of the, some of those remedies probably aren't available with respect to a nuisance determination because I'm, you know, I'm uncomfortable opining that you can't euthanize a dog that's merely been deemed a nuisance dog. The statute doesn't say that explicitly, but I think that that's, you know, that's a fair interpretation of the statute.
Oh, sorry.
So I think the more, the more remedies you include from, from that list in section 157, the more remedies that you include from that list in connection with the dog you've deemed merely a nuisance dog as opposed to a dangerous dog, I think the more susceptible the decision probably becomes. But again, there's no, there's no clear case law on that, you know, to my knowledge. And I, and that would be something that I'd have to, you know, review. But, you know, I'm.
When you mean susceptible, susceptible to appeal for, for.
Yeah, for example, what I might, my, yeah, the point is if, if I'm a dog owner and, you know, the dog's been deemed a nuisance dog, and yet I'm subject to five out of the six orders that are required with respect to a, a dangerousness determination, then, you know, maybe the, the, the argument becomes a little more palatable that, hey, you know, those, those, those are remedies that are available with respect to a dangerousness determination. And if, you know, that was, if that was the desired relief, then they, you know, you can't, you can't deem the dog a nuisance dog as opposed to a dangerous dog and then proceed to order all of the remedies available or required for a dangerousness determination. That would be, I guess, the argument that you would make. But again, the statute says if it's a dangerous dog, you have to order one or more of these remedies. It doesn't really say anything about the remedies that you, that are available to you when you deem the dog a nuisance dog, other than to say sort of generically, and I think in a way that gives the board some latitude, that, I'll read it again. If the hearing authority deems a dog a nuisance dog, the hearing authority may further order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. So provided that one of the, the remedies enumerated further down in the statute could, you know, reasonably be described as, as a remedy to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior, I think it's, you know, probably available even if the dog's been deemed a nuisance dog.
Well, then what I sort of think out loud is that since it's my, my concern is the insurance piece. Is that something that you could argue wouldn't fit within the definition of amelioration, which is, which is really directed to the behavior? And insurance is directed more squarely on, on the owner, I guess, right? And I guess the other thing is if it does transfer, which would have been one of my concerns about weighing in and, and fighting against a dangerousness, would I would be hate, I would hate to see somebody sort of accept all of the, the prescriptions and then, you know, move two towns away and then, you know, subject a new town, albeit not a town that I'm elected to represent, but nevertheless with people in it, and, and then immediately say, to heck with you. So it's good to know that that issue isn't out there. I wonder, though, if the issue isn't relative to, as you pointed out, that no matter, even if we say, you know, nuisance, I'm mindful that Chair Calton is trying to, you know, weigh everything, but even if we say, great, we're gonna go nuisance, but we need these things, the appeal could still happen and, but I, I can't worry about an appeal, obviously. So I guess my big ticket issue is whether or not it would stick, right? I, although, two last procedural questions. Query if a, because it's a de novo hearing, wouldn't dangerousness be back on the table in the event that there was an appeal of a nuisance decision that included the restrictions that the chair is talking about?
Well, as an initial matter, when an appeal is made, it's, it's the subject of a magistrate.
Sure. I mean, I'm just saying subsequent to the magistrate's hearing.
Yeah, right. The, the next step after the magistrate hearing is a de novo hearing.
And a de novo hearing, because I'm old enough that when I was a baby lawyer, I was involved in prosecuting when there were those hearings. You get, you get another bite at the apple. So you get your mulligan. But so does the, the other side, right? So that, that if somebody said, well, it's not right that you gave insurance because that's only for dangerousness dogs, so now we want it appealed, is it true that the judge could theoretically, if hearing all of the evidence, decide, well, I think insurance is important too, so I'm gonna order it dangerous? I guess I'm just thinking out loud. I don't necessarily need you to answer that, but I do wonder what it is, if it's, that it's the appealability of, of any restrictions that are put on, if it's the fact that if they, if, again, they do everything or nothing, hold on, there's, there's two questions. If they do everything that is prescribed under nuisance and Annabelle bites a third kid or a second kid, depending on your, your position, we're back here for another dangerous, for another dangerousness hearing. But I would imagine, again, just thinking out loud, in the event that we aired on the side of nuisance, but with the same restrictions, I mean, we aired on the side of dangerous with the same restrictions and the Annabelle bit again, we would be back as well to increase potentially the restrictions. Is that, is that right? Can we do that? So if we went dangerous with just all of the prescriptions that I'm talking about, and Annabelle bit somebody, do you then get another dangerousness hearing in order to determine what additional restrictions may be appropriate, right up to and including euthanasia?
Yeah, no, it's, it's an interesting question, but I think if, if there's a separate complaint.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about is a separate complaint, right? So either way, because I was just trying to think through all of the sort of downsides to nuisance versus dangerous. And I understand that there's a, a school of thought that thinks that this is all agenda-driven, but this is just how I like to think, so.
Yeah, no, it's an excellent question. I, I don't think that a dangerousness determination or an order, let's put it this way, I don't think that an order under section 157 inoculates a dog from a later order under 157 if there's a subsequent incident.
Right. So I still, I'm still, oh, the last one, enforcement, is enforcement the same?
Enforcement.
So if I, if we issue an order today, a nuisance, do your fence, do your insurance, ba, 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 and the animal control officer receives a phone call saying, hey, they had 30 days to put up their fence and do their insurance, and we drove by and there's no fence and it's 45 days out, and it's nuisance, do we have the same enforcement, we, the town of Norfolk, have the same enforcement capabilities as we would with dangerous, our dangerous dog? Are the penalties the same as the enforcement's the same?
I think that the, the way the statute sort of sets that out is it, it makes orders enforceable. So I think that, you know, if there was some, if it turned out that the subject of the order violated the order, your remedies would be the same, you know, the remedies are set forth in, in section 157, they would, they would apply regardless of the terms of the order. So for example, if there was an order, a nuisance order that required some remedial action that wasn't carried out, that would constitute a violation of the order and it would be enforceable. And I think Cece, with respect to a question that you would pose, I, I think, if I understood it correctly, well described, so it, you were asking about sort of the procedural process relating to de novo review by, by court. And what the statute says is a justice of the district court shall hear de novo an appeal filed under subsection D, and based upon credible evidence and testimony presented at trial, the court shall, whether the dog was initially complained of as a nuisance dog or as a dangerous dog, either one, dismiss the complaint, two, deem the dog a nuisance dog, or three, deem the dog a dangerous dog. So the court has, you know, broad available relief.
Which presumably, and again, I, I, I'm not gonna put any counsel on the spot by asking, but presumably it protects that exposure to a judge who, you know, you take your judge as you find them, doesn't like dogs, has had a bad experience and has determined that, that it's just not safe, will, will determine the dog as dangerous and actually euthanize. So that perhaps would keep someone from appealing. So those are my questions of you. I'm still not entirely sure I understand why there is a section regarding nuisance that has, that can potentially have the exact same requirements as dangerous. But, I mean, I understand why there's nuisance and dangerous. I'm not an idiot, but I, I'm not entirely sure I understand where the, where's the, why not have it be a nuisance, right? That's the piece that I'm sort of still, but I, that's my questions for now.
Well, it's a fair question. It's a fair question, Cece, and I think, again, part of the, part of the confusion stems from how the statute is, is framed, in my opinion, but the, you know, initially, that's sort of my initial take, but if the board wants, you know, that further vetting of that question, I'm happy to, to, to do that.
Well, I don't know that you necessarily need to do it for me. I'm still, I, I still get hooked up, but nevertheless, I'm not, forgive the expression, rabid about it on the fact that I think that it is grossly disproportionate. But at the same time, I am mindful of the, the nuances within that term and that other more learned people may disagree with me. So I'll leave it to others to ask other questions and opine further.
Anita, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'm really hung up on that grossly disproportionate as well. I also am a rescue dog owner, and I know the challenges we had, that those challenges in the beginning too. She trailed the leash around her in the house for, I think, six months to learn who was in charge and, and I can tell from the testimony how much that dog, Annabelle, is loved. And so I'm, I'm confident that she's a lovely pet for her family, and I have no interest in euthanizing the dog, just so that's clear and out there. I think that this is a family pet. But I do feel that if my dog, if my rescue dog had bit a child and then two years later bit another child, that this, I, I think this is a grossly disproportionate response. And I, and I want to protect the community, but I also want to protect Annabelle and her family from having to go through this again. And I think you brought up the word management. And, and I think that if my dog had bit a child, and then I would want to have systems in place to protect any other children at my house ever. And I feel like the management, we need to, because it has happened again, and because it has happened in a way that is serious, that we need to respond to that. And I think that the law charges us to come up with a finding of grossly disproportionate, because I, I think that the dog was just not provoked. And, and she could have felt like she was protecting her territory, but the law doesn't say that anything on their land is, is an authorized bite, right? It just says if they, if these criteria, and I don't see those criteria as being met here. So in my mind, it, it is a grossly disproportionate response. And, and then we need to protect Annabelle and her family. I'm not interested in euthanizing the dog at all, but I think we do need to put the all, I thought the little, are you calling them little one, little two, little three, all the way up to five, I thought made sense to protect the community.
Thanks, Anita. I'm just catching up on the other orders associated with dangerous dog. So from your perspective.
Little one was its restrained, little two is confined in like the cage like Cece was talking about. Three, is there on a lead if they're off and muzzled, if they're off property? That makes sense to me. Four is the insurance that we've all talked about. And then five is just that the dog is identified in some manner. And she probably is already identified, so that's probably moot. But so that in, in like Cece was mentioning, if she moves them down to town to town, the dog is, is identified in some way. Those all seem reasonable to me, given the circumstances that we're looking at.
Okay, but you stopped short of anything related to the alteration or.
Yeah, I think.
Not be kept reproductively intact.
I think she's already fixed because she's a rescue, so I'm pretty sure that that's already the case. And that doesn't seem, like, like, like we talked about earlier, we are not having any issues with the breed. So I don't, I don't think that that's a necessary response here. And, you know, even if she wasn't, I don't, I don't feel. don't feel compelled to do that, and I'm not interested in euthanizing this, this family pet.
Trying to figure out the difference between humanely restrained and.
I think those are.
The enclosure that we talked about.
I don't think we can mess with the wording, the way I understood what Peter was saying, is that we, these are our choices, I, I, I thought it was like a multiple choice test, and these were our only choices.
So he's right, because when we deem a dangerous job, dog, it says we shall order one or more of the following. What I had introduced before was the variable and seemingly much more open nature of a nuisance dog designation, in which we might have a little bit more leeway to customize those orders. Um, but you're absolutely right, those would be required if we were to put a dangerous dog designation, which, which from what I'm hearing is your preference.
I, I, I just, I don't know that I can lean into, I, I get the compassion that you're sharing for this family, and, and I absolutely, um, I just feel like what the law is telling me, if you just look at the law, like, words are words, and the law says if it's grossly disproportionate response, and in this case, the dog was not provoked, was not attacked, was not, um, and, and maybe is a mask a treasure, a trigger, but then if a mask is a trigger, and wheels are a trigger, and a hat is a trigger, it's, it's dangerous, like this, that's, that's a lot of triggers. Um, so in my mind, it was a grossly disproportionate response to this, to the situation.
And to be clear, my compassion for the owner isn't necessarily driving the recommendation, what, what I'm getting hung up on is the definition of grossly disproportionate, I agree that the action was disproportionate, what I'm having trouble kind of landing on is if it was way outside of the bounds of what would be considered appropriate or not, and, you know, then all of a sudden, we start getting more into the severity of the bite, if it was worsened by a child running away, the age of the kid, or what the triggers were, and all these different things come into play, but I think, I mean, clearly, you know, we're right between those two, and, you know, leave it to mass general law to give us some gray area to try to work within, but yeah, from my perspective, I agree, and it's tough, because, you know, while it's easy to say that the two designations we had to choose from are nuisance and dangerous, you know, obviously, the injury that the poor boy sustained was not designated as something of a nuisance causing it, right? But I think then we're getting it to just the verbiage of what is written in the law, and it becomes a little bit more convoluted. Um. Go ahead, Cece, was that you?
So, one of the things that I think, and, and this may be helpful, I may just be muddying the waters further, but when I'm looking at the statute, it's whether or not that there, you cannot deem the dog dangerous, um, if his reaction was not grossly disproportionate to the following circumstances. To Anita's point, sometimes words are muddy, right? And then you have to go to legislative intent, and to all, all sorts of other stuff in the background, and sometimes the words are, you know, you just view words in their plain meaning, in this instance, I read it at, um, if the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances, and then they are enumerated, then um, you do not find dangerous, but the dog was not protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another animal, or a person from attack or assault, it doesn't say in here, if, if from the dog's perspective, he's defending himself, or, or his buddy, the child who the other child was playing with, it doesn't say that, it just says if he was, was that um, reaction grossly disproportionate, we don't have that fact pattern, so we don't ask that question, we move on. The second is whether or not um, the person who was attacked, in this case, the child, um, uh, was committing a crime, um, and in that instance, if they were committing a crime, was the dog's reaction grossly disproportionate, he was not committing a crime, um, and so we move on. The next one is if the person that was attacked, in this case, the child, was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, I can't speak, or otherwise provoking the dog, and again, we don't have that fact pattern, so whether or not it's grossly disproportionate, um, we don't decide, and so I think that four, it's always the catch-all, right? The last one, at the time of the attack, the child um, had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public, such person was not authorized by the owner of the premises to be within such enclosure, including, but not limited to a gated fenced area, right? They go onto a defined enclosure for anybody who's confused about that, um, and, and we don't have that either, he was out playing in the yard where he was allowed to be, and, and whether or not he's frequently in that section or not, he was invited on the property, he's on a playdate with his friend, so it doesn't apply either, I suppose that would be the closest one, but even then, if you were to assume that four applied, and I, I don't think it does, is the dog's reaction to a child sitting in the yard, um, by biting him, uh, not grossly disproportionate, and I don't think it, so I don't think any of them apply anyway, I hear what you're saying about the nuance of the word grossly, and I was sort of interested in how we could sort of solve it from that perspective, but I'm, I, I'm, now that I sort of read it again, I just don't see, I think that we only get to see, and perhaps Peter can tell me I'm wrong, I only see that I can decide whether or not, I only get to give the dog the benefit of the doubt, and determine whether or not he gets the second bite of the, of the apple with respect to whether or not it's grossly disproportionate, in the event that what he did, or she, falls within one through four, if it falls outside of one through four, I, I think that it's just whether or not, um, you know, he, he bit them, but um, I don't know, I mean, I could be completely wrong, but I read it as he's, he hasn't done, or the child didn't do any of the actions that we would then be determining whether or not Annabelle's reaction was grossly disproportionate or not. So that's, and the only other thing I would say is that if you go on to read the statute, the only thing I would sort of qualify from what Anita was saying is, in the event that I were, you know, if, in the event it's determined that, because I understand it's not decided yet, in the event that it's determined that it goes dangerous rather than nuisance, I don't think you do, I think it's either or subsection C1 or subsection C2, like, I think you choose either that they're humanely restrained, or that they're confined to the premises, I don't know how you would do, I mean, I suppose you could do both, that would seem like overkill to me, it seems like you either run around the yard, or you're on a run, you're not on a run inside of a fence, so it would be my position that it would be C2, C3, C4, and C5, and um, that would be my position.
With a dangerous dog designation, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just hit the wrong button.
And I agree with order number five, doesn't seem like it's something that wouldn't have already been done, and if not, something that would routinely be done otherwise, so we still land at the three orders that I think we all agreed were most important in terms of the establishment of an enclosure, muzzles went out with a certain leash to be used, and the requirement for proof of insurance. Um, and, you know, I, I can get hung up all, all day on the definition of grossly, and how it applies to each of the situations that have been presented to us, um, but from my perspective, the more important thing that we should be focusing on is the orders themselves, because those are going to be what actually has bearing as to, uh, if we're taking reasonable action to ensure it doesn't happen again. That being said, Peter, uh, the course of our conversation, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, I, I think that covers it, Kevin, I just, I guess I would flag, um, you know, and I, maybe the more appropriate time to get into the particulars of the remedies is, is after the first determination has been made, but um, you know, just the, the definition of confinement under the, the first, you know, under clause two, um, you know, the requirement of a roof and the like, um, and then the, the only other thing, I guess I would add, and then, you know, Cece, you, you were going through, I think, in pretty good detail, the, the sub clauses of, um, of the first, I guess it's A, A3, one, one through four, um, and you made the point that, um, I mean, you went through each and, and made the point that the dog's state of mind, I think, if I understood what you're saying correctly, the dog's state of mind is irrelevant to the first sub clause there, the only caveat I would, I would add to, to that discussion is that the concept of provocation, I mean, three says injuring or otherwise provoking the dog, and I guess, you know, to the extent that someone might unwittingly provoke a dog, um, you know, that, that's, I just, I just point that out.
I, I see where, I see where you see that, um, I guess I'm mindful of, of, I just sort of take the entire sentence in totem, wherein it indicates that the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog, so I feel that otherwise provoking is sort of the sweeping catch-all to the early, to, in other words, it's not, um, you know, tickling, cuddling, and/or otherwise, right? It's, 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 it feels that there is, again, forgive me, animus, and, um, but that being said, there is no evidence that, that he was doing, other than his very, you know, his very being, which I don't think any statute would consider, there is no evidence that he was doing any of those behaviors, and, and so, and again, what I had said was that, I think, that I, I was talking more about the fact that it doesn't say, except for perhaps with threatening, that you, you should be considering this in the light of, of what the dog is thinking per se, but even with respect to the, of someone who, you know, with threats, I think it would be the same sort of um, question as there is in, in any threats case in, in terms of an element, and again, there is no evidence that that is what was happening here, so you're right, I, um, I thank you for that qualification, I was speaking more generally about the fact that, um, I don't see that this particular child engaged in any of the um, enumerated behaviors that the legislature found to be um, bad enough that they would invite, you know, the, that you could see a dog, if you did any of these, you could see a dog who is not dangerous reacting in the same way.
Yeah, and I'm, and yeah, exactly, I just, I just pointed out so that.
No, you're right, I thank you for pointing that out, that was, yeah, I was just sort of reading it in, in totem, but I agree, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so it appears that we have relative consensus, I'll toss it around to the board one more time for any thoughts or input, Anita.
No, I think we've talked it through.
Cece.
I'm all set.
I think, okay. Um, let me just identify a motion, Peter, anything procedurally that should be noted before we make a motion?
No, this is, this is, would just be a, a vote on the first prong of the, of the question, um, that's set out in section 157, whether, whether the dog is, whether the board wishes to dismiss the complaint, deem the dog a nuisance dog, or deem the dog a dangerous dog, um, but procedurally, I, I'm not sure there's anything further that needs to be done, other than making a motion to, you know, with respect to that question.
As it pertains to the specifics associated to the orders, are those variable at that point, um, in terms of the type of enclosure, the amount of feet that it has to go down, if there's a roof or not, um, once an order, a designation with orders is made, uh, where do we fall into that process? Is that something that's worked through and agreed upon due negotiation, or how does that work?
Well, once the, the, um, once a vote's taken, and once a determination has been made with respect to the dog's status, I think that the board can, you know, deliberate about what, um, what remedies are appropriate. Um, I think that, you know, the, the issue of confinement, if you look at sub two, um, I guess it's C2, um, the list of enumerated remedies that would apply in the event that the dog is deemed to, or had, the list of remedies, um, one or more of which are required to be imposed if the dog is deemed a dangerous dog, sub, sub one, and I think Cece, or, you know, Kevin may have pointed this out as well, um, you know, the, the phrase humanely restrained isn't separately defined anywhere in the statute, and, you know, I think query what that, what that means precisely, the statute doesn't say, but, um, but when it talks about confinement in sub two, it says that, um, confined, shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises, uh, of the owner or keeper, and provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, the sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet, provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog, so, you know, I just wanted to be clear that sub two lays out those definitions, um, you know, I think the concept of, of offense probably would come in, in sub one, you know, under humane, humane restraint. So I don't know if that addresses your question, Kevin, but I, I guess the short answer is, once the, once the board makes the determination, provided it does something than other, other than dismiss the complaint, um, it can deliberate about how to fashion the remedies, and I think there's some, there's some latitude within that, but the, the confinement in sub two is pretty copiously defined in, in 157.
Understood, and just to ensure that I am capturing the consensus of the board, our intention is to attach the orders two, three, four, and five, is that correct?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is, so my preference is offense as defined, um, and I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say that, right? My preference, and someone can tell me, oh, I'm, you know, you're not allowed to, that's overreaching or something, but my preference would be offense, um, not an enclosure, because again, as I indicated before, the problem with an enclosure is you still have to get the, the, the dog from point A to point B, uh, where offense removes that, the margin of error, um, so I'm not sure, but it feels like it would actually be one, three, um, four and five. Or actually, now that I think about it, maybe it is one, two, three, four, and five, maybe one is the fencing, and two is that, um, that the, um, the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, um, providing, that however, provided over that confinement shall mean securely confined indoors, or, well, I guess that's, no, I guess it isn't too, I think whichever one counsel thinks, now that I'm reading it, would cover a fence, again, so they don't have to, you know, build roofs, and, I mean, this is a dog, this isn't an outdoor, I understand that this statute is probably defined for all sorts of dogs, and sort of spend all of their time outdoors, this is a, a family pet who's already got a house, um, that she lives in, um, that this is just about fencing, so that when she goes out to do her business and do, get her exercise, there's no opportunity for her to slip away or to bite somebody, so, um, whichever one, Mr., I think, my read, and this is not my wheelhouse, but my read would be C1, three, four, and five, but I am, I am nothing if not open to people telling me that I'm completely wrong.
Yeah, I, I'd say if, I'm not sure, I guess I'll refrain from chiming in, Cece, unless you, unless you'd like me to.
No, I mean, I, I'm, I'm asking if you think that I'm supposed to be, that it should be, if what we want to accomplish is what we've sort of indicated, which is the fencing, the notice, the insurance, and the, um, the muzzling when walking, or the humane muzzling, whatever it is that they're, that they're comfortable with the humane muzzling, then, um, I'm all for it, I'm just not sure if it's C1 or C2 that accomplishes the fencing, I feel like it is C1.
Right, no, I, I agree with you, I, I think maybe as a practical matter, with a way to protect. the way for the board to protect itself against risk that, that, that C1 might be adjudicated to mean something other than fencing, would be to, to order the fence and then say, you know, in the event that it's adjudicated not to encompass within its scope the availability of, of fencing, then, then C2. You know, so you basically.
Right. So that we don't, we're not exceeding the scope of our authority.
Right, exactly.
All right, CC, I think you might have nominated yourself to make a motion.
Don't we have to, do we have to vote, or is it a motion? This is, you're, you're the one with the script.
No, there's no script for this. No, no.
I just ask a lot of annoying questions. I just ask a lot of annoying questions. But if somebody wants to tell me what it is I'm supposed to, to say, I mean, I'll say it. But I think that your voice is just so much more maleficent than mine. I really feel like you would do that.
I don't do this. I, I know what you're doing and it's working really well. I'll make.
You're transparent. So I'll leave it to you.
All right. I move that the board designate Annabelle as a dangerous dog and attach the orders associated as order one, order three, order four.
Kevin, I'm sorry, if I could just interject, I, I guess that my, I think the, the cleanest way to do it would be to, to break it out into two votes. The first vote is whether the dog, whether to dismiss the complaint or deem the dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. That's, that's vote number one. And then depending on how that vote is decided, you would go to potentially a second vote.
Okay. So the first would be, I move that the board designate Annabelle as a dangerous dog. I'm waiting for some kind of affirmation from Peter there.
Yes.
Second.
I need a second. I heard that.
All right. So we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor, Kevin Calcutt, yes?
CC Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
It is unanimous votes. The next item is for the orders. So Peter, in that case, you would go through each one and identify that the orders attached to the dangerous dog designation will be, and read off each one?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the, the, there, there should be a vote to, after a discussion or deliberation about the, the appropriate remedies, obviously, the, the written decision, you know, should be accounted for. So, but, but with respect to this vote, I think that you'd go through the remedies and decide which of those remedies to, to adopt. So.
I think we already decided.
We, we decided, but I'm trying to figure out, because of the, the dependency that we had talked about related to the specifications of one versus two, how would that would be worded?
Oh, I see. Okay. So I would, what I would say, if, if the provider, the board wishes to, as part of its order, require offense, but not confinement as, as it's laid out in two, then what, what the board could say is, you know, require, require the installation of a fence under, under C sub one. And in the event that C sub one is adjudicated not to allow for the requirement of offense, then the board orders confinement under C sub two. Of a way to, to protect against a situation in which, you know, there's a determination that that C sub one doesn't allow for the requirement of, of the installation of offense. I think it's not, I think it does, but the, the way, I think to protect against and, and contrary ruling is to say, in the event that, that a, a fence is adjudicated not to be available under C sub one, then the board would order confinement under C sub two.
Just a question. I thought we couldn't change any of these in any way. So how can we specify it has to be offense?
Well, humane restraint, the, the question is whether a, a fence constitutes humane restraint.
Okay.
Because couldn't, couldn't they interpret tether to be humane restraint? Under one? Well, actually, there's a prescription against tethering.
Tethering.
To run.
So C sub one defines, it says that the dog be humanely restrained, provided however that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building.
Does that leave it up to the owner to decide how to do that, or the town?
No, I, I think, in my view, you know, initially, my, my, my feeling would be that the town can, can, you know, define humane restraint. The, the statute doesn't. So the court, the, the town could say, you know, that the fence needs to be installed, I think, under sub one. But to the extent that a fence constitutes humane restraint. But the point is, if, if a court were to disagree and, and determine that, you know, that's not, that's unavailable, my suggestion is that the, the order could say, you know, if, if the board wants to do either one or two, and its preferences to, to as part of one, it require offense as opposed to confinement as it's defined in sub two, then I think the board in its order could, could require offense under sub one. And then say, if, if that's deemed, you know, outside the scope of sub one, then confinement under sub two.
But to your point before, we don't have to designate that now. We could just identify the orders that were associating to the designation, right?
What do you mean?
I feel like we're getting hung up on the specifics included in the orders that we're choosing to be associated. And going back to your previous point, we just have to identify which of the orders are included. We don't have to designate the specifics associated to our expectation for the fulfillment of such.
Well, I think you could, you could incorporate the specifics into, you know, a written, a written order that, for example, the, the chair provides to the board at, at an upcoming meeting for the board's review and, you know, consideration.
Okay. So take me through the, the motion one more time.
So I think if you, but in terms of sub one, Chair Calcutt, if, you know, you could say humane restraint. But, you know, I think you could also define what, what the board means by that. And, and I think, in my opinion, offense is fairly within the scope of that. My only point was, you know, to the extent that the statute doesn't specify, if the board wanted to protect, protect itself against, you know, an adjud, a determination that, that you couldn't require offense as part of humane restraint, then the, the fallback would be confinement under sub two. But I, in my opinion, you know, you, you can, as part of a remedy under one, sub one, require offense.
So to that end, the motion would be, to move under the designation of a dangerous dog for Annabelle, the board orders C sub one, C sub three, C sub four, and C sub five. Sorry, not five, just C sub one, C sub three, and C sub four.
And five.
Yep, five.
And five. It's late.
Within, and then there would be right, an acknowledgement that in the event that one doesn't accomplish the goal set out by the board, that they do two, that we could do C sub two? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry. Give me a sec. All right. So I move that under the designation of a dangerous dog for Annabelle, the board orders the associated line C sub one, C sub three, C sub four, and C sub five, with an acknowledgement that if the parameters of C sub one do not meet the board's expectations, we will sub with C sub two.
Second.
Okay. I'm, I'm seeing, whoa, 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 don't second it. Don't second it. Sorry, I gotta add on to that.
You didn't say anything, so I got excited that we were gonna get.
I was looking to Peter for a reaction. He'd give me the.
Yeah. So, so I, I guess the, the, I'm not, the phrase does not meet the board's expectations. I, what I was, what I was suggesting is if, if, again, if the board wanted, and this could be more specifically fleshed out in a written decision. But if, if the board wants to require the installation of a fence as part of hu, the humane restraint remedy under C sub one, that it should order that, but then say, you know, if, if in a legal challenge, a court adjudicates C sub one not to allow for the installation of a fence as an available remedy, then, then the board would require confinement under C sub two. But the point is that that C sub two remedy of confinement would, would be invoked only if a court were to, to adjudicate C sub one is not allowing the board to require the installation of a fence. Now, the, obviously, the board doesn't have to take that approach, but that's just one way to avoid requiring confinement upfront if, you know, if the board would be satisfied by, by offense as opposed to what the statute defines as confined to the premises.
My motion is destroyed again. Hold on. Again, to not complicate this anymore, is that something that we need to have be part of our motion right now?
No, I think what, what you could do is you could, these are issues that could be fleshed out in a, in a written, in a proposed written decision, that the board could then deliberate about it at its next meeting.
Okay, but the wording would identify then that the order is effective immediately. But how could the order be effective immediately if we're not specifying what needs to be done?
Well, I think, if you, if you wanted to apply effective immediately, I think you would, you would have to, I think you'd, you know, ideally, you'd specify. And what you could do is say, is move to, move to implement the, the remedies available at C sub one, what was it? C sub one, three, four, and five? And that, that as part of C sub one, the board would require the installation of, of a fence. And that the particulars, and, and that the, the board's order shall be, you know, described in a written decision to be presented to the board at its next, uh, meeting.
Cause it's so moved. I can do that with Peter, right? All right. Say this again.
And Kevin, I think you could also clarify that the, the, any appeal window would run from the date of the issuance of the written decision and order.
All right. Let's see if we got it this time. I move to implement the remedies available in C sub one, C sub three, C sub four, and C sub five. And as part of C sub one, require that a fence be implemented. I also move that the board order will be described in a written decision for review at the next meeting, and that the appeal window to begin, will begin at the issuance of said written order. And do we hit, do we hit all points there?
Yeah, and just to, you know, make it painfully obvious, that C sub, that, that sub clause C of generalized chapter 140, section 157, which I think is understood, but just to make it crystal clear.
It is crystal clear. Do I have a second?
Second.
We're hearing a second. We will take any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye?
CC Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, Peter, for your help and guidance. It is greatly appreciated. And I will be reaching out to work on a written decision with you over the course of the next week or so.
Good.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which feels like a lifetime ago. Life, I believe you have some COVID updates for us.
Very quickly, we are at 42 cases at the moment of only one active. First day of school was yesterday. I understand that it went very well. Couple of logistical things to work through, people to learn new routines. But overall, I hear that, that things went, went well. So we're really thrilled about that. One thing I will tell you about is this, the governor just came out with an update to the order about restaurants and outdoor dining. about restaurants and outdoor dining, they're now allowing, as you know, the outdoor dining was allowed by, till November 1st or the end of the emergency. Now it stated that it can go beyond November 1st until 60 days after the end of the emergency. I bring it up because, as you know, we have one restaurant offering outdoor dining right now, Nebato's, and we're gonna check with them on what their intentions are, we think that their license is written broadly enough that you don't need to amend it, but we just wanted to tell you that's possible, I'm not sure how they or other restaurants will work out staying open outdoors in winter, but just wanted you to know that that had, is a change, so, nothing for you to do unless you feel it's important at some point to actually vote to, that staff would recommend that it's fine the way it is and, and go forward from there.
Thanks, Blythe.
That's it.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all I had to report.
My only quick question is if we have a plan in place or a timeline to reopen town hall at this point, or is that still not on the calendar?
Well, we are open by appointments, we either are helping people who come and, and meet them in the parking lot if necessary, or invite them in to meet with us there for business they need to take care of, very frankly, we were, you know, as concerned as anybody else about any resurgence in the fall and didn't want to open, only to close again, which is why we haven't opened more fully, and we're just keeping an eye on how that's going. But I would really welcome anyone who thinks that, you know, wants to come see us, needs to come see us, to please get in touch with that department, and we'll figure out a way to help you.
Thanks, Blythe, anybody on the board have any questions for Blythe related to COVID-19 updates, starting with CC gave me the no, Anita? No, all right, thank you very much, Blythe. Our next portion of tonight's meeting is our public comment, this portion of the meeting is designated for anybody in attendance to be able to share a comment or question that is within the scope of the board or the town administrator, we just ask that you keep that within three minutes, especially at this hour of the evening, with that, I will open it up to anybody who would like to share, if you would, please use the raise hand function by clicking on the participant icon on the bottom toolbar. I am seeing no hands raised, if you aren't able to find a button, please wave, seriously, at your camera. And we are seeing no comments at this time, too late for everybody, understood, moving on to our first agenda item this evening, please consider approval of two items regarding the Lakeland Hills 40B project at 144 Secong Street, Blythe, some background, please.
I'll give you a little background, and then there's two people, three people, I think, who are on the Zoom call who can definitely give you more details, basically, the ZBA approved the comprehensive permit in mid-August, and it was decided that it would be best for this project to memorialize all of the details of it in a memorandum of agreement, which is the document that's in your packet and needs, requires approval by the board, did receive signed copies by Mr. O'Hart, were delivered to town hall today, so he's signed it already, besides that, one of the conditions is a gift to the town of $25,000, and so I recommend that the board vote to accept that gift, and I see that both Attorney Hill and Chris Weider, Chair of the ZBA, are both visible on the call, so I'm sure they can give you many more details than I can about exactly how those came to be and what they mean, so I'll leave it there.
Dan, Chris, I'll leave it up to you, who would like to start, go right ahead.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Dan Hill, Special Counsel for the Town on, on 40B matters, just briefly, for some background on this project, this process started back in 2017 with an application for a 104-unit 40B project on Secong Street, at 144 Secong, over the course of a couple of years, the zoning board conducted several public hearings, the project was reduced a few times, down to 96 units and then to 84 units, the board, during the course of the hearing, was very concerned about several impact issues, namely, impacts of the project on wetland resources, impacts on nearby private wells, and also concerns with respect to the, the design of the roadway on the, on the project site, as well as the intersection at Secong Street, so over the course of the hearing, and especially in 2019, a lot of testimony was received, we have, we had peer review, experts review these issues for the board, and the outcome was that the board pressed the developer, the applicant, to reduce the project even further, down to 44 units, and the applicant came back with a proposed plan in March of 2020 with 44 units and a completely redesigned roadway network, a much less dense project, this is on 22 acres, and so with 44 units, the board is pleased that a lot of the impacts that it was concerned with have been mitigated significantly, so I won't get, I won't get into details unless you'd like me to, but suffice it to say that the 44 unit plan is a drastic improvement, it allows for a lot more space for folks to appreciate, and it definitely mitigates a lot of the traffic impacts and safety concerns that we had with, with the intersection. Now, the purpose of the, of the MOU is, is basically threefold, actually, there's one advantage of having a separate contract with a developer is that it gives you enforcement rights beyond just the traditional zoning enforcement remedies that you have to enforce a zoning permit, so it gives you an additional ability to enforce the commitments that the developers made on this project, the second, it eliminates any risk of an appeal that the developer could take to the State Housing Appeals Committee, that, that venue is notoriously unfriendly towards municipalities, towns don't have a lot of leverage, the deck is pretty much stacked against us, so eliminating the risk of an appeal is very valuable, and to have a contract signed by the applicant agreeing that he's not going to appeal is quite valuable, and then finally, the agreement gives the town a recorded land use restriction that is yet another enforcement mechanism to make sure that all the agreements that the developers made are locked in for a very long period of time, and that these commitments are enforceable not just against this developer, but any future owners of, of the project site, so, that's the basic elements of, of the contract, this is a project, we don't, we don't do these contracts for every 40B project, but here, where the developer made a lot of concessions and commitments which are, are of great value to the town, it was important to have this memorialized in a separate site agreement, and so that's why we did it.
Thank you, Dan, Chris, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Dan's pretty much summed it up.
Very good, in that case, I will open it up to the rest of the board for any questions for Dan or Chris, starting with Anita.
I just have one question, just from my own understanding, what is the advantage to the developer of having the MOU?
Well, I, I would let the, I guess the developer speak to that, I mean, I view it as an agreement between all the stakeholders at, at that issue, and so I think the developer benefits from having a sense that the town is in support of, of this compromise, and the developer can move forward knowing that, that it has the backing of at least, you know, the board of selectmen and the zoning board.
Thank you.
CC?
No, I, I think that a lot of work's been done, it's really nice to see all the effort on all sides for what's in the memorandum of understanding.
Thanks, CC, and I'll just echo CC's words, too, I know that the comprehensive permit review process isn't exactly the most desirable thing to go through with the push and pull that exists between the town, the developer, and everybody's interests that are involved, so, thank you very much, Dan, Chris, all the ZBA, for all the work that you do to make this as palatable as possible for both developers and for the town, thank you. Blythe, anything else to add?
Yes, so the, the second step in this is part of, part of the agreement is there's gonna be a gift of $25,000 to the town for mitigation for, I guess, traffic in the area of Secong Street, and that's gonna be, as I understand it, can be used by the town for various items that may come up in the next five years, and then if at the end of the five years, some or all of those funds aren't spent, they can be then transferred to the town sidewalk fund for use in other locations that the town deems appropriate, I think it's always important for select boards to officially accept gifts, so that then the, the finance director can set up a gift fund and deposit there, so I've scripted a motion for you to do that, and I don't know if, if, or Chris or Dan has anything else they'd like to tell you about that than I have.
I don't, Dan.
No, but the purpose of the money is, is in case there's additional improvements that, that the town feels would be appropriate to incorporate at that intersection, that, the funds are there to do that, and again, if they're not used, it goes to the sidewalk fund, but yeah, I guess we, we do need a motion for the acceptance of the gift, and we also do need a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, to approve the, the settlement agreement, the MOU, and we do need the board to sign that if it's been approved.
So there's, there's two motions.
I believe we have both scripted motions here.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. With that, I would move that the board vote to approve a memorandum of agreement for the Lakeland Hills Development Project between the town of Norfolk and Edward and Sandra O'Hart, do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Kevin Calcutt, aye?
CC Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
That mode is unanimous, I would further move that the board accept a gift in accordance with general law, chapter 44, subsection 53A, in the amount of $25,000 for future traffic safety improvements in the area of the property, and furthermore, any funds remaining after receipt of final occupancy permits for the project may be deposited into the town's sidewalk fund for use by the town. Do I hear another second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do one more roll call vote, Kevin Calcutt, aye?
CC Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is also unanimous, thank you very much, Dan and Chris, for staying with us tonight, much appreciated.
Good night.
Our next item this evening is to please consider designated, designating the municipal approving authority for remote learning enrichment programs, wow, that was a mouthful, Blythe, could you give us some background, please?
It is a mouthful, and I'm grateful that Anne is joining, Anne Proto is joining me tonight, so, as you know, kids started back to school yesterday in Norfolk, and they're on a hybrid model where they're going to school either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, which leaves three days a week that they're not at school and, and need be somewhere, you know, maybe it's not possible for them, mom and dad have to work, or, or whatever, state at the end of August approved this, this program by which entities could put together options for remote learning in locations to, in order to give people, where kids could be in the day they're not in school, but that requires a couple of steps, and one of the steps is that the towns, each community, has to determine who's going to license at the municipal level these entities, so that they can then get approval locally, and then go to the state and, and obtain their approval, too, it's a truncated process meant to kind of resolve this particular issue, and so, Anne has been working relentlessly to, to try to set up programs for kids in Norfolk, and we're also aware of a, of private entities trying to do the same, so she and I and Superintendent Alardi met last week to talk through the process and what's needed, and determine who we would recommend to you should be designated by the board to be able to make the local decision, and so our recommendation is that for any of the programs that the Recreation Commission via Anne is looking to set up, that those could be approved by the superintendent, we think it needs to be a separate entity, and that can be take care of what the town is trying to do, and then any private groups, any businesses that want to set up something similar, those could be approved by Anne on the town's behalf, the superintendent not feel comfortable handling out the, the needs of outside groups, and we really don't think that there, right now, that there'd be that many, so, that's just my very broad overview, Anne can tell you absolutely everything you ever wanted to know and things you've ever thought of about this, so, I will toss it over to her and then into any questions you might have, but that's, that's generally why we're asking you to act tonight. And it's time sensitive, I should say that, we were, you know, we were desperate to get this going this week, because school started, but there's a lot involved with this, to setting up, hiring people, all the, all the protocols in place, we're trying to get, Anne's trying to get it done as quickly as possible, perhaps next week, and so the timing of your meeting was really critical to get, move this forward tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Blythe, and hi, Anne, how are you?
Fine, thanks, how are you?
Very good, thank you, anything you'd like to add to Blythe's outline?
So I think she really covered the, the overall scheme of what we're trying to do, I am working with St. Jude's Church and the Grange to secure space there, Attorney Mello has the lease from St. Jude's, and he's reviewing that, so, and we're making sure the internet is up to speed, and that's part of actually the, what needs to be done for our programs, but also any other program that is looking to ask the Department of Early Education and Care for a license exemption, so, the organizations that can offer remote learning, that they can either have a license, and that's, they're already licensed, so, but these are, these are entities that don't have a license, that don't typically offer education or care during, the key is during school hours, and that's why they need a license exemption, so, for example, Four Kicks has set up a program that they would like to offer remote learning, but they don't typically have children in their facility during school hours, so they need an exemption, and we also need an exemption, because we don't usually off, you know, kids are in school, so, it's just a change of the way things are happening these days.
Very good, thank you, Anne. At this time, I'll toss to the rest of the board for any questions they may have, starting with Anita.
Um, I don't have any questions, it sounds like this would be a real asset to the community, I'm assuming you'd use the same safety protocols that the schools are, and the same cleaning protocols that the schools are, so it sounds like something that could really help our families.
We are, we are doing all of that, the only thing, we, we are, are actually trying to place kids further than six feet apart if possible, just because there, it's not a, it's not the same as being in a classroom with a teacher, it's, you know, they need a little bit more room to move around.
CC, any questions or comments?
I'm, I'm sure you've just said it, and that probably because it's so late at night, I missed it, how is this paid for?
It's, it's fee-based.
Okay, that's good, then I have no further questions.
And I don't have any from my end either, thank you so much, Anne. With that, I would move that the board vote to appoint two persons as municipal approving authorities on behalf of the town of Norfolk, School Superintendent Ingrid Alardi for programs to be offered by the Norfolk Recreation Commission, and Anne Proto for all programs offered by independent entities within the town of Norfolk. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Kevin Calcutt, aye?
CC Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And it is unanimous, thank you so much once again, Anne.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night. Good night. Our next item this, yeah, good night sounds awesome, right? Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the request by the Garden Club of Norfolk to use Town Hill and the gazebo to hold a club meeting to dedicate the tree to essential workers on Saturday, October 17th, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, with a rain date of Sunday, October 18th, 2020, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Pretty self-explanatory, Blythe, and anything else you'd like to add?
Just that this is just a follow-up to what happened this summer when you approved them actually planting it. Now they're just asking for permission to use Town Hill to actually have the ceremony. Very straightforward.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Anita?
No.
C.C.?
No.
None from me? So with that, I will move that the board vote to approve of the request by the Garden Club of Norfolk to use Town Hill and gazebo to hold a club meeting to dedicate the tree to essential workers on Saturday, October 17th, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, with a rain date of Sunday, October 18th, 2020, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Nobody left to have further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
It is unanimous. Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the following two licenses to Zealous Beer Company for pop-up beer and barbecue events on Town Hill on Sundays beginning September 20th. Blythe, go right ahead.
So we have heard about these events that this Zealous Beer is holding in Medfield. That's actually, I guess, where they're located. They've been quite popular with residents to have a venue to go and have, try some beer and have some barbecue or other food with it, because you've got, these days you can't have alcohol without food. And so we were approached about having them somewhere in Norfolk. And so the request is to be able to use Town Hill on Sundays, and ideally, the requister would like to use them every Sunday between this Sunday, the 20th, provided their license is approved and the food inspections can happen through November 1st. I think, I don't recall whether that's five or six Sundays, understanding that in the decision you just voted, if the garden club needs the rain date of Sunday, October 18th, that might impact one day. And so there's really a couple of things at play here. Booking Town Hill for those, all those dates for basically the afternoon, as well as issuing two different licenses. One would be a one-day license to sell beer for each day that they will have an event, so there would be however many Sundays, there may be that many licenses. And they're also interested in offering amplified music so that they can, so those folks who are enjoying the beer and the barbecue can listen to some music while they're doing that. That would be one license, a one-time license that would cover all of those events. So we've had a lot of back and forth Nancy has with Jeff about what the requirements are for use of Town Hill, what we do about making sure that people are spaced out and all safety protocols are in place, whether they eat for electricity or not, trash pickup, parking, actually not really a problem because the library's not open on Sundays, so there's probably parking in the area. So really, for the board to think about, do you want to commit the Town Hill for a series of events? Right now, the only impediment would be that one day the garden club might use it. We don't charge for the use of Town Hill for, you know, expenses right now, except for the $100 fee in case there's damage. Is this, is the event just something that we really terrific for our residents that we want to give this a try for all the Sundays or some of the Sundays? Those are the sorts of things we've been thinking about, but I can see that Mr. Pedder's on the call, and I'm sure he could tell you a lot more about his intentions than I can since he and I haven't had a chance to speak directly.
Thanks, Blythe, and welcome, Jeff. Thank you for sticking with us into the late night tonight.
Yes, hello. Is this some kind of?
Do you want to take us through a little bit of your event?
What's that?
Do you want to take us through a little bit of the background and your intent for the event?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we've done, we've done beer gardens in many different towns over the years, and we do have one currently in Medfield where largely, you know, we sell beer and on-premise. And we have a food vendor. It's typically someone called River Public, but we do have other vendors just to, for variety and mix it up a little bit. We're quite careful to follow all the safety regulations related to coronavirus. I think one of the reasons it's been so popular is because, you know, it's quote-unquote "safe" within coronavirus because it's outdoor, already safer. And we have tables which are outside, they're all table-stroke chairs which are over six feet apart, there's six, only six people per table. We do rope off the area, but it's just somewhat, you know, it's almost like a community space. And I think, you know, people don't want to sit indoors at the moment, and come the winter, that's not going to be possible to sit outside. That's why there's a bit of a rush to get things permitted. And so, yeah, we're based in Medfield. We've been around since 2017, and we distribute around the area. We also distribute to Rhode Island, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. But yeah, we are associated with a lot of active lifestyle running clubs, that kind of thing. All our beers are lower in alcohol. Our highest alcohol beer, which we distribute, is only 5.3%.
Very good. Thank you so much. Blythe, do we have any feedback from our friends in Medfield about their experiences with these types of events?
My understanding is they found it, it's been popular and going well, that people seem to like it. No issues with the events that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Can I, one of the reasons that I put down all those dates is, I mean, we may not use all of them, but I've found that if you don't ask for the dates, then you don't have them, you have to come back and ask in addition. And it's just easier if you get all the dates lined up. So our intention would be to use all of them, but, you know, it's not a definite that we're going to be there every Sunday. We tend to promote a lot on social media mainly. In Medfield, they have allowed us to put up a sandwich board, which has been quite good. I don't know what your opinion on putting a sandwich board up somewhere in the center of town is. Just another thought.
So our office does, we work with, our office does approve those separately, staff handles, but we work with both Public Works and Police Department just to make sure there's no impediments to traffic sightlines and things like that.
I was going to say, Jeff, we're really going into uncharted territory here, so let's not get crazy with incredible things like sandwich board signs or anything, okay? Let's kind of reel it back a little bit. But that being said, I mean, this is new. This is a new venture for us, and it's something that I would like to hear the board's interpretation or perspective on. But I think from my perspective, it being as new as it is, I would be hesitant to approve all of those dates in one fell swoop. I'm not saying that we should have you come back in every month to approve another set of two or three, but at least for this first event, I think from my perspective, I feel more comfortable executing one event and then kind of regrouping to talk about it at our next meeting to determine what that schedule looks like, if any adjustments are needed or whatnot, just because this is so new for us. But that's just my perspective. I'll open it up to the rest of the board for their thoughts and opinions, starting with C.C.
And I kind of like the, I mean, I'm all for additional opportunities for folks to get together. So I think it's great, but I like your idea, Kevin, of maybe seeing, I mean, I'm not sure what it is that necessarily could happen, right? But I wouldn't have any objection to some sort of a modification that does not require him to have to come, well, come back to the, to his computer, right? Like, all the way to his living room with his computer, but doesn't require him to have to keep re-upping his ask if there would be, if there's a way to do that. I think that's fine too, but I just think that generally, it's fun to have more opportunities for people to have things to do. And certainly in the current times, I think that's even more true. So I think it's just grand, no questions.
Thank you, C.C. Anita, your thoughts?
Well, when I read about it in the packet, my first thought was like, sign me up, but this sounds awesome. And just to be able to do those kind of social things, but then the part of me, I'm super worried about people will have their masks off because they're going to be eating and drinking, and so eating, and I'm nervous about the COVID piece because the numbers seem to be creeping up. And so I wonder what Medfields, did they see any COVID number changes based on this? So that would be my only concern. I think it sounds very, a nice community activity, and I wanted to go. I read, I was like, oh, I want to go, but I'm just nervous about the safety.
I'm afraid I don't have any details about Medway's COVID numbers. I just haven't had a chance to follow that. I would point out that there were three, just to, so if you're trying to frame what you want to do, the next meeting is officially October 6th. There's five Tuesdays in September, so there's an extra week. So if you wanted to allow, allow three Sundays, the 20th, 27th, and 4th, before you have the next meeting. That's just how the days go.
Jeff, could you speak a little bit to the safety measures in place with people who are conceivably drinking and eating without a mask on?
Well, you're, by the coronavirus rules at the moment, you have, you can only take your mask off when you're seated. So you enter the beer garden with a mask on, and if you come up and buy food, you have to wear a mask. Any kind of queuing is not encouraged, particularly at the bar station, and you have to have a mask. The risks are really quite low compared to other eating and drinking establishments. As you probably know, all bars are closed at the moment because you have to have food service with alcohol. So, and the tables are all fair distance apart, so the risks are much more, much lower than I think you'd get in a, even an outdoor seating area, because it's a large space, and you're only limited to a capacity of 50 people, including staff and a band if you had one. So you're not really allowed to stand around drinking. You're meant to sit down at your table drinking, and you're only allowed to have a drink if you've ordered food. Our taproom in Medfield is actually currently closed because they have a requirement that you have food on-site, which we do not do as of yet. We may change that come the winter, but not yet. Going back to the, I know that Medfield, when they authorized this, they gave us, I believe, two weeks provisionally to see how it goes, and then they didn't ask us to come back, but they did something similar to that, just to make sure, you know. I guess that a lot of board of selectmen's, they exist to protect the safety of the community, et cetera, so I totally understand that.
That is one of the core goals. Thank you for acknowledging that. Blythe, you had noted that our next scheduled meeting is October 6th. That would include three Sundays from today. I don't believe that we have a need for a third September meeting on the 29th, so is that still holding true?
Sure, I could come up with something for you to do on the 29th if you would like, maybe not after tonight.
Yeah, I think we did about three meetings tonight. So I think what I would propose is that we approve two of the next three Sundays for use by the program. We collect some experiences, and then we bring it up again for a potential extension at our meeting on the 6th. What is the board's favor?
Sounds good. That sounds like a great idea, Kevin.
How does that sound to you, Jeff?
That sounds very good, thank you. I hope to see you all there.
After tonight, I will be there.
I'll be at sleep.
I will, in that case, move, let me word that differently, I move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill on Sundays, on two Sundays, beginning September 20th through October 4th, to Zealous Beer Company, and further to issue one-day beer and wine licenses for each Sunday during, for two of those, oh man, let me try again. This is late, man. This is not the time to be making ad hoc changes to your motions. All right, let's try again. I move that the board vote to approve the use of Town Hill on two Sundays, beginning on September 20th through October 4th, to Zealous Beer Company, and further to issue one-day beer and wine licenses for those two Sundays during that period.
Is it?
Second. If that's, was that right? Do you need, does anyone need to correct you? All right, I'll second.
Jeff, yeah, you can second, we can go into further discussion. We have a second from C.C. on that. Jeff, I said two Sundays because I want to take one Sunday off in there, so you pick which two Sundays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know that all the appropriate approval processes has started for the food permit, but I don't know that that will all be done by this Sunday, so I think giving him some flexibility about when they are would be probably best. He picks the Sunday.
Does that make sense to you, Jeff?
Yeah, so there's three Sundays there, and we've picked two of them. That's fine, I've got it.
All right, so we have a seconded motion on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? I am hearing none, so we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that passes unanimously. I also move that the board vote to issue an entertainment license to Zealous Beer Company for the amplification of music in connection with beer and barbecue events on Sundays from September, on two Sundays from September 20th to October 4th. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do we have further discussion? Actually, I do. Blythe, I imagine that Chief Stone has already reviewed and signed off on this? Yeah, okay, just making sure. Any other further discussion? I am seeing none, so we'll do one more roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And it is unanimous. Thank you once again, Jeff, and we look forward to seeing you on Town Hill.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good morning, I guess.
And Blythe, obviously, when we do solidify the dates for these events, we should get them up onto the website, what's new, whatever we can go. Thanks. Our next item this evening is to please discuss a proposed update to the town's general bylaws, animal control regulations. Take it away, Blythe.
Yeah, so before this incident that happened to do with dogs, it already had been identified that our bylaws were out of date. Most importantly, the state law changed significantly in 2012, and that's when the designations of nuisance and dangerous were implemented, and a lot of the things that we've just been experiencing in this last few months because of this hearing all came into being. There have been some minor changes to our bylaws since then, but not the overhaul that's needed. So it has no bearing on the fact that we had a hearing tonight, simply that, but myself and ACO Hillary Cohen and Town Clerk Kel Green made a priority this summer to take a look at these and start working on, you know, an update, wanting to be, try to be prepared if the board wanted to take this to fall, if you think we're ready for that, or get your feedback and maybe do a little more work and take it in the spring. to fall, if you think we're ready for that, or get your feedback and maybe do a little more work and take it in the spring. So I, I see that has hung in here to the wee hours. I'll just tell you, the major, the major changes as we see it is it's bring this into compliance with the MGLs as you've just been discussing and clarify how things are handled. Through most of it, it references the state law and doesn't spell it out, just so that if the state law changes, our bylaw doesn't need to be changed. One of the things that was a real issue for us at the beginning of this particular situation with Annabelle was the authority of the animal control officer to restrain an animal. As you recall, there was back and forth about who could do that and for how long. This would clarify that. It would reduce the amount of time dogs are impounded and actually add cats to that definition. I guess there's been issues with how long we keep cats in the past. And it would also clarify to a question that came during the hearing tonight, how are, how are any violations from a nuisance or dangerous dog imposed? And we outlined that, actually separate it out into a lesser set of penalties and fines if a dog is just caught roaming loose and a more significant set of penalties if the dog violates an order like this. 30,000 foot level, there is also some adjustments to. The fees are pretty much the same as they were. We have suggested that we tighten up the timeframe and the penalties if people don't license, which would be a difference. But overall, goal was to get these up to snuff to where they need to be. So we haven't had this taken, we have not given this to Town Council yet. We wanted to get your first thoughts about it, whether you want to think it's important enough to the community to get going on this and bring it to fall. But also, you know, understand that it, you know, if you don't think it's appropriate to hurry, we could take a step back and wait till spring, but we at least wanted to be moving along. So that's your, that's a quick overview.
Thank you, Blithe. I will toss it to my fellow board members first for any questions or comments. I'll start with Anita.
Yep, so I guess, first of all, thank you for doing that work. And it sounds like a great and positive step forwards for our town. So I think that's fabulous. I'm wondering if, logistically, if fall town meeting isn't a town meeting, we want to keep a little short. And then maybe if we're going to add, maybe spring, it might be better just logistically because of the virus, right? So maybe we want to keep the fall town meeting for more pressing matters and then put it to the spring. But I don't, I guess I don't have strong feelings about that. I'm just wondering about the logistical challenges of doing town meeting in the fall. And maybe if we have a shortened agenda, that might be useful.
I don't know. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Anita. Cece, any questions or comments?
No, I'm going to echo what Anita said. I understand that there's some, there's folks who are concerned about the virus or the fact that it's the fall town meeting and, you know, maybe want to keep it a little lighter. Also, I think you give it a little more runway to really drill down into what other people do, what would be successful in terms of edits, et cetera. So I also, unless there's some reason that I haven't contemplated, which of course is entirely possible, I like the idea of moving to spring town meeting.
The only, the only thought I had while we were going through, listening to the hearing tonight, was that our current bylaws, I have them right in front of me and it is a little late in the hour. Not sure what enforcement authority we would have if a by, order that we just imposed is violated under our current bylaw. That doesn't, to approve something just because. It's a question I, I'm going to pose to Attorney Mello after the meeting, just to understand what that means, where our bylaws may not quite be covering that now. So. But I very much appreciate the waiting till spring. I just wanted to be, in case you felt it was really important to do that.
I mean, I agree from my perspective. I mean, I think right now our fall town meeting warrant is looking fairly light, Blithe. I know we'll talk about that in a moment, but I believe it was unexpectedly light, correct?
Well, the, yeah, there's no zoning articles that the planning is planning to bring, is going to bring forward. So that takes a number of things off the table that were on last year. And I'm, I'm in articles right now with this one included. I know we're going to need to, if we take this off, we're going to need to substitute one in to handle transfers of money back to the school budget, probably through a reasonable appropriate article that isn't a transfer. So I, yes, we're trying to keep it light. And other than a CPC article and street acceptances, you know, for the second time, really, we're just handling money issues before we set the tax rate and moving forward on capital where we, where we have the funds to do so. So, yeah, I think, I think describing it as a light, we may spend some, you know, not insignificant amount of money, but it's not going to be complicated by law changes that can be very time consuming.
Okay. I mean, Anita makes a good point. We don't know what the, the format of the meeting is going to be or what we're going to have to do to execute. So perhaps it is just better to wait until the spring. All right.
I'm looking forward to talk about.
Sorry, go ahead, say it again.
I just had wanted to bring it forward to make you aware that we could, we are ready to think about moving forward. So when, when you have, when it's not the wee hours and you have a chance to review it, that would be great because we would love the feedback over the next few months to have it ready for the spring.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Blithe. Our next item is to please review the draft list for warrant articles for the November 17th, 2020 special town meeting.
So as I said, I think, I think the key items are going to be budget transfers, capital expenditures, either from borrowing or from not. I, we don't have any unpaid bills at the moment. Our transportation rideshare funds are $1,200. So we're talking internally about whether we even have a viable project for $1,200 or we'll just wait and save it up to another year. We're discussing whether we have any water capital to do or not. So after that, the CPC talking article would be to actually approve the funds to follow through on, on buying the land from the state and that legislation that, you know, finally passed after all the work of our, of our state rep and so, and staff to get that over the finish line. That's, that's, that's an important item. I believe that the B1 committee wants to have a very short update of kind of what's going on with Town Center. And then we take off control bylaws. We have to redo street acceptances because it's been more than 120 days since we voted the last time. So we need to do it again. And on two of the streets, we were looking at a taking this time rather than the fee. So I class it as a do-over. And matter of fact, we'll put it on your next agenda so you got, the board can vote it again so we can have it back on the warrant. So, yeah, it's pretty short.
Do we have indications of any incoming citizen petitions or none?
I haven't heard of any, but, and I checked with a clerk last week. She hadn't had any requests for any petitions. But as you know, it takes.
Very good.
It's yours this time. So it's a different, different level than an annual meeting.
Got it. Any questions, comments from the rest of the board, starting with Anita?
No, I think short is good in this, in this environment. I think that's not a bad deal.
Cece, I saw the head shake. Nothing?
Yeah, I want to touch base with the moderator and just, and so we have a, we have both the middle school and the high school reserved. I don't know if anyone thinks that outdoors again would be a you know, certainly we can be under the lights on the football field, but whether that's a good plan for mid-November or not, I'm going to reach out to him and ask him if he has any preliminary thoughts.
Thanks, Blithe. Our next item this evening is to please discuss website posting of board correspondences. I have not seen any new ones come in. Anybody else on the board have any that they've seen? I'm seeing those all around. Thank you very much. Onto our next item, Town Administrator Updates. What else do you have for us, Blithe?
Just a few very quick things. We're about to get underway, have a construction meeting with the folks to build our new Holbrook Street Wells. That's exciting. I don't know if anyone saw the alert on our website, I think it went up this afternoon, that there's some folks out there trying to pose as assessors and get into people's homes. Because right now the revaluation is going on. And so we put out an alert to folks that will always show up at marked on vehicle and our staff have identification. So if you don't see a Ford, a silver Ford Focus with a town seal on the side, you know, parked in front of your house, don't let anybody in. Really disappointed that that's happening and wanted everyone's aware of it. And then winter is coming. We're hoping it's, it's, it's not a bad one after the easy winter we had last winter. But one thing we're finding in the, in the region is a significant dearth of snow plow contractors. We're going to be competing hard with our neighbors to, folks to do work. So I'm just putting it out there, if anyone in town would, and we're going to be advertising soon. If anyone's interested in working for us plowing, either you have a truck or you are a driver in need of a truck, we will be interested in talking to you. Because towns, big and small, are very concerned they will not have enough staff. Because we don't have all the trucks and equipment that we actually need to, for snow operations. We count on hiring people and it's going to be difficult. So I'm going to be early and often looking for, looking to try to improve upon that so we can meet our residents' expectations for snow removal when winter gets here.
Thank you, Blithe. Questions from the board relating to Blithe's updates? Anita, no? Cece? No. Thank you very much, Blithe. We have some warrants that need to be approved. With that, I move that the board approve four warrants for the period ending, for the period 8/28/2020 to September 8th, 2020, as printed on the agenda for this meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
In unison at 12:28. Nicely done. Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous. And last but not least, we have some minutes to approve. I will toss it over to our clerk.
I move that the board vote to approve the minutes of August 18th and September 1st, 2020 regular meetings.
Second.
Hear a second? Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous.
The board has not voted on the minutes from the dog hearing of July 27th. Our thought was that we would have those minutes and from, for you at the next meeting, when you take up, you take them up together, as well as the, the decision that will, the written decision that we'll be working on to bring back to you to approve as well. Just wrap it all up together.
Thank you, Blithe.
Just so you know, in case you were wondering.
Appreciate that. Would that be the end of the agenda? I'll toss them around one more time for anybody else who has something else. Blithe? Anita? Cece? No. I'll just end by saying that, you know, this is a really long meeting, but I think that it needed to be for us to give the appropriate amount of attention to a very serious complaint. I know it went pretty long. I know it was kind of tough to verbalize some of the procedural stuff, but I am happy that it was given the attention that warranted, all things considered. So thank you very much, everybody, for your attentiveness to the long meeting and everything you contributed to the process. It's greatly appreciated. That being said, our next meeting is on October 4th. We hope everybody has a great early morning.
October 6th.
October 6th. Nobody's even listening at this point, but yes, October 6th is our next meeting. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Lord, I hope not. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Cece Vantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.